Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'll call back in to order this meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees for October 18th, 2012 at 7:20 PM. Thank you everybody for coming out. This is a work session tonight. We will not have an open forum for agenda items or an open forum afterwards for non-agenda items. And we will have an opening ceremony, though we'll have a pledge of allegiance. And Mrs. Solins, would you like to lead us in the pledge? And if you would please silence your personal electronic devices, and we'll take a moment of silence. Now, the first item on the agenda tonight is a discussion item for Bring Your Own Technology. And prior to the meeting, we met with the Student Leadership Advisory Board in our dinner meeting, and we've allowed all those students to go home and do homework, because those are all the super high-achieving, I-take-all-the-A.P. courses kids, and they're busy all the time. Two of them are from Bowie High School. Yeah. Mr. Hogg, would you like to lead this off, and then we'll go? We're going to discuss Bring Your Own Technology for the classroom.
Sure. Ms. Maron, I guess I want to thank the students real quick. For those of y'all that aren't aware, and we've talked about it before, the Student Leadership Advisory Board is comprised of junior-class presidents from each of the six high schools, and then one at-large that's elected, and this year she happens to be from Bowie High School. It's a new initiative we took out, and we're to grab that information. So before that, one of the topics that came up from staff was Bring Your Own Technology, so it was thought it was a perfect, I guess, creation, implementation for the first meeting with them, and hearing what the students say, what they think about that and how they think technology, because let's be honest, everything we decide up here directly affects them. So with that, Ms. Maron, I think, is Mr. Harvey going to go over some of the guidelines?
Yeah.
Is that how we want to touch on that? But I just want to thank the students for that work, and thank my trustees and colleagues and staff for the work. It's a great thing. It was our very first time, so it can always be better each time. I think it's always achievable for greatness, but I thank everyone for working on that, and thank for the students for their time. And we do let them go home, so they don't have to stay and listen to everything. I'm sure they'll watch it online later.
Okay.
Probably not. That's okay.
Mr. Harvey, you're up, please.
Thank you, President Maron, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos. As you said, we're going to talk about guidelines that we're looking at for Bring Your Own Technology. In the last three years, we've been very fortunate with the bond funds to be able to purchase much extra technology that's been going into the classrooms, and much of that has been mobile technology: iPads, laptops, netbooks, iPods. And so we have a lot of experience now, I think, with the utilization of that equipment in class, and looking for ways to enhance that and to be able to provide greater access. And we think that Bring Your Own Technology is certainly an initiative that would provide that. It's something that a lot of school districts are looking at and implementing now. I just real quickly want to go through a few points related to the guidelines. There is a National Education Technology Plan, and in that plan, it tells us that in order to receive E-rate, which we do receive E-rate discounts, which are very large discounts on our telecommunications costs, we have to provide Internet filtering for all of our students. And SIPA, which is the Children's Internet Protection Act, is the one that describes that, and we're required to provide that filtering on our school networks. Also in that plan, they recommend that a combination of acceptable use policies and professional development can make student use of personally-owned digital devices both feasible and safe, and that national education plans encourages us to look for ways to actually utilize that technology in our classrooms. We did some surveys with our principals recently as we talked about these initiatives, and we asked them, were they supportive of implementing such a plan in the district? And overwhelmingly, their answer was yes. Ninety-one percent of 74 of them said, yes, we thought we should move forward with such an initiative. We had a few who were undecided because they needed additional information to understand it better. We also asked them about, should teachers have staff development so that we're sending a clear message and everyone understands acceptable use guidelines and the guidelines in this plan? And in that question, 100% of the principals said, yes, there should be a staff development component that makes sure that we're consistently understanding these guidelines and implementing our acceptable use appropriately. We also talked with our principals about outside of class, because a lot of the discussion really is the use of technology for instruction in the classroom. That's really what the guidelines are for. But because students now would have this technology in their hands while they're at school, should we allow it used outside, which is different than what we have done here in the district? And so lunch was one of the questions. And you can see, looking at the overall breakdown, it was about 60% said yes and 40% said no. But when we looked at that by level, at high school, our principals 100% said yes, that lunch was an appropriate time to use that. 70% of our junior highs said yes, and it was actually the elementary then that brought that down, that they didn't feel as strongly that that was an appropriate use at the elementary level. And we also talked about using it between passing periods. Was that appropriate use? And again, in general, the answer was no, that that was probably not something that we wanted to pursue. So in our efforts to be a high-performing, technology-rich school district, which is what our strategic plan is now telling us we need to be doing, that we should be offering access in the classroom for instructional uses, but still protected by SIPA, some sort of a BYOT model. And so some of the advantages, as we have looked through this, is that it does indeed support our strategic planning goals. It creates more engaging classroom activities, and that's, I think, can be important as we start to implement all kinds of technology in our classrooms. It increases hands-on access for student use, and we think that potentially would actually help us, and if students are bringing their own devices, they know how to use those devices. There's no learning curve. We're trying to figure out what the district kind of technologies are when they have their own technologies in their hands. A few solutions to some of the challenges we have is that we really believe, because of the 2009 bond program, that our students and teachers are much more aware of how mobile devices can be used in teaching and learning. We won't be doing this for the first time. We've been doing it already with AISD-purchased devices in classrooms. This is going to just increase that access. We have put into the guidelines that students and parents will sign off that they understand about these guidelines, and that AISD is not responsible for damaged and lost devices in this program. Students would be required to connect through the AISD wireless network, and that's so that we are indeed following those SIPA guidelines. They're using our web filters by going through our wireless network. And again, over the last three years with the bond program, we have been working to upgrade that wireless network to support these kinds of devices, and so we're to a point now where we're ready to do that. We are saying that the use of student-owned technology devices for personal purposes would be limited to non-instructional time. So we're not saying that students are going to be having their phones available all the time in classrooms and doing texting all the time in the classroom. It's for instructional use under the guidance of teachers, and that we still could confiscate devices that were causing disruptions in the classroom. Some of the critical attributes of the model that we put in place, and I think there has been a lot of thoughtful planning that went into it. There are communications portions of this, how we communicate with parents to make sure they understand the guidelines, that our teachers understand the guidelines, and that our students understand them. There would be mandatory staff development with our teachers to make sure that we're sending a clear and consistent message about acceptable use, and it's really all driven by appropriate monitoring by teachers and administrators. I think you all have a list of the guidelines, and I won't go through all of them, but some that I would like to point out. Number two, it talks about the definition of a mobile device, and that it is a laptop, a netbook, a tablet, an iPad, an iPod Touch, a smartphone, an e-reader. So all of those are the kinds of devices that we're talking about. Down on number eight, it says that students may use their own mobile technology devices in the classroom only when permission has been granted by the teacher. So the teacher is really the one who will be controlling this, which is the way we want it to be with any kind of an instructional piece of material. The teacher says that now is the time that we're going to use technology. You can take them out of the bags, and we can use them for the research or whatever the program actually is. Number nine says that personal technology devices must be silent during class, except when used in an instructional manner. And then number 10, the use of technology, student-owned technology devices for personal purposes is limited to non-instructional time before and after school, and we'll have to decide about the woods portion of that. So really, that's what the guidelines are, to just lay the groundwork for how technology will be used in the classroom for instruction. So I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. And the trustees will be asking a few questions tonight. Mr. Hibbs.
Mr. Harvey, I appreciate the presentation. As Mr. Hogg indicated, we were able to speak with some of the high school students along with this. A couple of, I want to say that I'm all for the technology aspect of this and the students being able to use the resources that they have, whether it's being, bringing their iPads, e-readers, smartphones, whatever it may be. We have to also understand that we don't, as a district, we're not dictating to parents that they need these things. One thing that I would want us to discuss as a board tonight on this, I think, and I mentioned this in our dinner work session, that I would like to see this be limited to the high school and possibly to the junior high school level, but not at the elementary level. I don't think that we, as a district, need to be putting out anything to parents, telling them that their second, third graders need to bring phones to school. I don't think that that's appropriate for us to do. That's my own personal opinion on that. On a couple of the numbers here, on number five, it says students must use the district's wireless network connection when on campus. Do they have that opportunity to do that now?
Well, now they're not supposed to have.
Right.
But having said that, yes, that opportunity is available. There is a, referred to as a guest network, and we do have campuses that have allowed
That share that with their students right now?
That have allowed students to utilize that. And it's different than our full-blown wireless network in that we control what access they access to whoever is on that guest network. And so, yes, it is there and is utilized.
How is that going to be monitored? I mean, is it going to be up to the teacher to go and say, okay, are you on the district's network?
Yes, it is. I mean, we have no way to make sure that they're not doing otherwise. But I think with all of this, really, it's about monitoring by teachers.
Right.
I mean, if you see a student who's on Facebook, which is a site that we wouldn't be able to use access to, then you know that that's something that is not appropriate. We shouldn't be doing that, and you address it that way.
Right.
So to me, it's more, we set these guidelines, and we have our acceptable use guidelines as well, to say, this is what you're supposed to do. And then when that's not what's done, we deal with that through code of conduct.
Okay. Yeah. My concern is that, you know, I have my own data plan. I've got five data plans for the five iPhones that we have, and I don't see my kids changing over when they've got the free access.
Well, one thing that we do believe, and it's true today and certainly could change in the future, is that in general, people want to be on the fastest network they can be on.
Right.
And our wireless network is going to be faster than a cellular network right now.
Okay, good.
And so we believe that that in itself is going to encourage students to want to be onto the wireless network, because that network has a much higher speed than their cellular networks currently do.
Okay. And then I also just put a question mark next to number 11 that said students will not loan their own personal technology devices. This is the biggest fear that I have with the lower grades, besides, there's just, there's some parents that thinks it's appropriate, a second, third grader can have a smartphone, and other kids don't have that access. So I think that causes a litany of issues. So where I'm very supportive of us going to this policy, allowing this to even give students freedom during their lunch hour, before-after-school times, I do have the reservation for anything outside of high school.
Dr. Reich.
I want to make sure, as far as what we're looking at doing, these are our guidelines that we're looking at. At our next meeting is our goal to have this as an action item, to approve guidelines, to approve policy. What is our, and is this, as far as timeline, effective as soon as possible? Can you give us a little bit of insight there?
Again, depending on the conversation tonight.
Sure.
Yes, we would be ready to bring the guidelines back for you to approve at the next meeting. There would then need to be some changes, not the policy. There's nothing in policy that this really changes.
Okay.
There's what has to be changed are some of the things in our student code of conduct book.
Okay.
It's really in that document where we describe the appropriate use of, or the non-use of some of these technology devices. So that would be the next thing, though, is we would have to go into the code of conduct and make changes to that document. But by passing this, if you were to pass this at the next meeting, it's not then that the next day that this goes into effect, because then we have to put in place staff development for teachers, communicating with our parents, communicating with our students. So we would then put together that timeline, and it would be into the second semester, I think, that we'd actually do.
Okay. So that would be the earliest is into next semester. Okay. And you touched on the related question I had, because I have a mark next to number 15, which speaks code of conduct to me completely, in that we'd have a reference in here relative to the code of conduct. So that's perfect.
Yes.
And has there been any consideration? I know that we block Facebook right now, and this might be something that I'd like to ask our student advisory board. I know that there's different clubs that actually kind of meet through Facebook, and they could see that as a hindrance and inefficient during their school day to try to do something over lunch, that kind of thing. Has that been discussed, or have you seen how other districts handle Facebook as, in particular, as far as social media goes?
I'm not familiar, and it certainly doesn't mean that there's not some out there. In general, it appears that the majority of districts block Facebook.
Okay.
YouTube is another one that has, there's a lot of interest in it, and people have started to unblock that, and we've started to do some of blocking of that as well. What's nice about the filters that we have in place is that we have that flexibility as we make those decisions in the district. We control what we're blocking and we're not blocking.
Yeah.
But I believe that the majority of districts still are blocking Facebook.
Yeah.
And we certainly are doing that at this time.
Yeah.
But it's something that is just a decision the district has to make, and we can implement either way.
Okay. And that goes to what Mr. Hibbs said, that there's a high likelihood that, well, can't get through on the district server, so I'm just going to use my own data plan and do what I need to do.
Right.
So that's something that, yeah, definitely, lots of training there. I'm all for this. I think this is good. I definitely want to honor what Mr. Hibbs had requested that we discuss and kind of vet out here tonight. I don't know if we want to do that as a separate time, but I'll release the floor and let everybody else chirp in, and then we can go after that, if that's what you want. President Maron.
We'll go around a couple times at least. Mrs. Solins, you're not flashing, but I think you're next.
Good news, Mr. Maron.
In fact, it's Mrs. Pena that's flashing.
Mr. Harvey, will the number of users create a need to upgrade networks?
We believe that we have built a wireless network that can support that. As we did it, we didn't know it would be necessarily Bring Your Own Technology, but what we were looking at is being able to support that students, all students, had devices in their hand. And so that's really the coverage that we've been putting in place. So we believe that our network, that we're actually still upgrading, and we'll finish that through the rest of this school year, will support the initiative.
And I'm getting at the question that Mr. Hibbs brought up, and also something that the students brought up in the dinner meeting. Do you recommend, at this time, like a systematic implementation or a whole system? So if we're looking at systematic, maybe we'd be looking at bringing in at the high school level to begin with, and then see how that goes? Maybe that would address the...
I mean, it certainly could be. From a technology perspective, you know, it will be available. I mean, it'll be out there.
Right.
And so then it becomes, are you allowing it on specific campuses? If you say, no, we haven't implemented it yet on elementary, then that's fine. We would tell elementaries, we're not providing that, you know, we're not going to do BYOT on your campus yet. We'll wait until we've implemented it at high school and junior high and work our way down. So we certainly could implement it that way.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Pena.
Well, I just wanted to say two things. One was, and it addresses the usage of the wireless. When I got my cellphone, I got unlimited access to wireless using the Internet, but they phased that out. And now, then the day after, and I did not realize it, the day after Verizon no longer allowed it, unlimited access, I got my daughter her smartphone, and they capped her at a 10 gigabyte. Well, she can far exceed that in what she wants to do. She's always asking me to let her use my cellphone so she can do what she wants. And so what she does when she's home in the wireless, she disengages it so that she's not using her gigabytes, and she uses our home wireless. So in essence, what we would be providing the students, from what I'm understanding from Mr. Harvey, is allowing them unlimited access to using the wireless, so they won't have a cap at school. So if they're smart and they figure this out, they'll want to use what we give them rather than their own plan.
They'll figure it out.
And they'll figure that out right away, because, you know, we get, I get an alert when she's at 75%. You know, so that, because if she goes beyond that, then it's a huge cost to me, and of course, I don't want that. So I think that's one way we may be able to get the kids to use the wireless that we provide them. The other one was, I was going to suggest exactly what you just said, that we phase in, phase this in at the high school level for all instruments, but we already provide iPads to pre-K kids. They come, they bring the iPads in in a cart, and then I've walked into a classroom where the pre-K kids are sitting on the floor, and each one of them is using an iPad, and they love it. So we're already providing the technology to our elementary kids, but in a learning environment. And then, of course, they're taken back up, and they're shuffled away on that cart. So we're already phasing it in at different levels, but the use of the cellphone, I agree with you about elementary. I don't, I just don't think that the maturity level is there, and I think we should use our high school kids first to put this in place, and then if we think that it's working, and you know what? Things change over time, just like what's happening now. We may figure out in a year or two years that we should give it to the junior high kids, you know, and we'll change the policy again to accommodate what is needed. And that's my opinion on this whole thing. I think it's, the time is now that we need to get it to the high school kids. We don't need to stop that, and then phase it into the others as necessary.
Dr. Reich.
Couple of questions came to my mind, and I guess I'll just speak to the whole phase in. I think phasing it in just to gain experience is great. I think our junior highs, even from our faculty perspective, are going to be chomping at the bit to be able to utilize this in the classrooms. So I, for one, would say that it wouldn't, in my opinion, I wouldn't be comfortable waiting even a year down the road. As far as elementary, I see the discussion points that are being made. I would perhaps maybe look deeper into elementary as four through six versus K through three, if we're going to do that. I'm pretty liberal in my ideas as far as empowering the kids, what they can do at any age, and the teachers. I'm thinking specifically in my mind of our sixth graders, who we've had discussions many times of, are they going to junior high? Are they staying at elementary? They're in that kind of in-between phase. I guarantee you, just about every single sixth grader has one of those devices, and so we would be closing the window in on them, just like we are doing our whole district right now. So those are my thoughts on that. Questions? What happens in the situation where, say, in high school, where a teacher is using something related to technology, where kids are doing whatever, survey type of thing, 98% of the kids in that classroom have their device, 2% do not have a device? Do we have enough resource in place to accommodate those kids that don't have their own device?
Well, and I think that is exactly what you look at doing. We have a lot of technology in our schools, and so we're not expecting that every child is going to walk into a classroom and have access to this, and that we'll back that up with our own technology. Or another thing that teachers can do is to differentiate the instruction in such a way that students are grouped together and sharing devices on a project, you know, that, okay, we're going to do, and yes, you're using the iPad, it's the district, okay, this group doesn't need that, two people in the group have it. And so I think there's a number of things that teachers can do to kind of manage that in the classroom. But the intent is not to create some inequity there.
Right.
But it is to address, to make this more available to students and
Absolutely.
And utilize the district technology to help students.
Absolutely. Yeah, and I just, you know, kids are going to be very sensitive to that, that they might be somebody viewed as a have-not versus a have, and at a minimum, I want to make sure that we're accommodating them. The other question I have, related to the guideline or the agreement that parents and students will be signing, how, what is our, the thought process in enforcing this to, especially during the initial rollout and implementation, to know Johnny hasn't brought it back to school? How is that teacher going to know? How are we going to have that whole communication process to enforce the signing?
I think what we'll have to do is similar to what we already do at the beginning of the year with the student code of conduct. You know, there's a sheet in there that every child and their parent signs, and the campuses are tracking those, and I think we would have to put a similar system in place with this, and give teachers a way to know, okay, do I have students who are not supposed to have devices? But that's really, I think, more a function of the parent and the student. Okay, the parent says, I don't want you to have it, and that's really a parent-student kind of thing.
Sure.
And probably not something that we're necessarily monitoring, but that we want to make sure that people understand the guidelines. And so we want, you know, everyone to say, yes, I understand these guidelines. Parent, if you don't want your child to bring their device, then tell them not to bring their device.
Okay. And then, that's good. And then in the future, after we have matured with this process, do you foresee this being an electronic signature attached on to the student code of conduct signature all in one?
Right now, of course, even the student code of conduct is a paper signature.
Right, that's true.
We're not doing either one of those electronically. Absolutely.
Okay.
But that's the direction, we should be giving that, at least as an option, in those places, and we've talked about that as a part of the registration process, or what are some of those things that we can look at doing electronically for those parents and students who want to do that.
Yeah. Great. Thanks.
Mr. Hogg.
Thank you, Mr. Maron. Mr. Harvey, do we actually know how many students actually have phones?
No.
Do we know how many that actually have devices?
No.
I think that'd be a good thing to find out, because we're making a lot of assumptions. These kids don't have it, these kids do. Well, I don't know. I didn't expect our slab, every single one of them, to have an iPhone.
That's right.
I thought one would have an Android. They all had iPhones. So we're making a lot of assumptions, and I think we have to go with that. Mr. Harvey, when someone gets onto the network, is there any talk about having them have to log in?
Yes. What we are looking at is a system where they will actually register their device, and so we'll know what devices are on the network and who they're connected to, and we'll be able to use that to track both usage of the network, but being able to do that to authorize that we know who's there. So yes, what we're looking at, that our system will, you'll actually register your device when you connect. You'll go in and say, yes, log in, this is me, and then we'll know who's on the network.
And if they then try to access a banned site, would that then be notified to the principal? Would that be notified to the parents? What would occur then?
Well, no. If you try to then, if you If you try to then, if you get onto the internet and you try to get to a site that's blocked, you get a message that that site's blocked.
I understand that.
We don't do anything then to currently log and try to figure out what that is. It's blocked and it doesn't let you there. But, right now, we're currently not doing anything to log those and try to do anything with them.
Okay. And I would also, I would also say, just from an overall network standpoint, do you think most of our teachers, because we block Facebook now, correct?
Yes.
What percent do you think actually use it on their phone during the class day already? Can't guess.
I know that it happens. I know that certainly teachers are teachers that are doing that, but I don't.
I know, pretty common in the workplace. Doesn't matter if you're a school district teacher. They have probably less time than most of the private sector to be on Facebook. But, when they want to access it, I see, no offense to all of them that are posting during the day, I think it's crazy we're blocking that. You know, and I think it's the same concept, and I say that from a concept of, we're now trying to put more rules up there in place and we're doing the same thing with saying, and I like the idea of phasing it in to, starting with the high school and then do a phase, but then automatically blocking the elementaries right now, because we don't know how many elementary kids have them. We don't know how many actually have it. And we're not talking about phones.
That's right.
I don't think anyone said a phone. I think the topic is bring your own technology. And as much as I don't like seeing all the six-year-olds sit at the dinner table and play their games on the iPod Touches, it occurs. And so, now, they're doing that the whole time, they're learning as kids, but then they come to school and we're blocking them if they want to use it. And I agree with you, Mr. Hibbs, we've got to be careful about who has them and who doesn't going in there. But, I think that's also a principal's decision. I think that's a teacher's decision. And if we're going to do it, I'm okay with rolling it out, because, boy, that's the last error I want to make quickly, is rolling it out too quickly to the elementaries. And I think a phase-out, a phase-in program's not a, it's a great idea. But, I think just saying, "Oh, the elementary kids aren't going to have it," because I think we're also looking at a very short-sighted model. We've got to look at, where's this growing? And yes, I understand we can come back and change policy, but we're just going to look at, what do we have right here, right now, instead of saying, what are some things that we can do? Because if we start banning the teachers right now, say, "No, you can't use your own technology, no, no matter what, you can't bring your phones to school and have them out." Elementary kids, well, a lot of them have them. So, let's talk through how we get those. I think logging in's critical. I think opening up the access to some of the programs, because then, you know, the more we access it, you can see who's using what. Can see what's being, what's happening. And if they're on our network, they get to play by our rules, correct?
Yes, indeed.
Because we're on our network, they're going, and Ms. Pena, I agree with your comment, they're going to find ways to go around the network and they're going to log in. So, the more, you know, we're blocking basic things they're using, well, guess what? Now, that kid has his phone on his LTE, which is now faster than most networks. I'm a little worried about that with our own, because I don't have my new iPhone 5, but most people are saying it's faster than their home internet of where it is. And so, I'm worried about the more we block, the less they're going to be on, and the less truly control you have. Because the more you block, the less control you really do have when someone is on your network. You can see what is being occurring and what is going on. And that does limit then the amount of games and policies. Do we also have built into this, some discipline pieces built in, that if they are caught playing games, things of that nature, abusing the system?
Well, and that's the component that's a part of the student code of conduct. So, that'll be the next thing, because there will have to be changes in the code of conduct because it right now says that you can't have a phone. And so, those are things that we'll have to address next. And there are the levels of discipline. And so, that will be the next piece that we have to look in after this, is what are the changes we make?
I think it's a great thing. I think we've got to go. I don't think we need to, listen, it's a trial and error. We're going to try some things. I think a phase-in's a good idea. I'm fine with that of where it's going. But, I think we have to make sure, we're not thinking about just what's right here, right now, but let's think a little farther in the future with technology. Because while I'd love to say this board is going to come up and change its policy every year, I can see a lot of policies in our board handbooks right now that are 15 years old. So, I would rather set the policies correctly at the front and try and go with it that way.
Mr. Hibbs.
If a student has unlimited access with their own wireless network right now and their parents are paying for it right now, they're not going to be concerned if they're logging in on the district website, I mean, or network. They're going to go with, if they want to go to Facebook, if they want to go to look up ESPN Sports Center, it's going to show up and they're going to go to that. It's just a fact of life. I mean, so, you know, when it comes to the access, I think that these students are going to need to be responsible. And a level of maturity needs to come with the devices. Mr. Hogg, I don't have a problem if a kid wants to bring an iTouch or bring an iPad to school. I'm talking about at the elementary level, I do not believe it's appropriate for the student to be bringing, or be expected that they're going to use their technology of an iPhone. And where we've got schools, and I'm not, I said, "Mr. Hogg" there, I'm not pointing you out, I'm just saying, I agree with you on that. But, guys, I believe that we have certain schools in our district that are more affluent than others. And there may be one campus at elementary that's very affluent, that every child on that campus could have phones, iPhones, smartphones, be able to do great class projects. I know that we have other sectors of this district that they don't have those same opportunities afforded to them. And those kids in some of those schools are not, will not have that same learning environment. For the elementary level, I think we should be expected to give or provide the technology that's needed at that level. What we're talking about here, and this has kind of evolved, because we were just talking about, when we first brought this up, I guess, earlier this year, was that we were going to allow the kids to carry their cellphones on campus again. And then, we started saying, okay, with our strategic plan, these things can be used to go to dictionary.com or to go to Wikipedia or to go to, you know, some site to be able to pull down educational information. And I believe that that's available. And I think that that comes with that maturity level of your junior high or your high school kids, not at your elementary school. So, I'm, if somebody can show me difference, that a, you know, a first or even a sixth grader is going to be able to use a cellphone in an educational manner, I would encourage you to do it. I don't see any evidence of that. I don't see that happening. I'm just, what I'd like us to do is put in a responsible policy that we can bring to our high school, junior high school teachers where they believe this is appropriate. And then, also give the students the ability to show their responsibility to have that cellphone on them at lunchtimes or before or after school and not in fear of having to have it taken up and pay a $15 fee to get it back. That's where I was hoping, or I was thinking that we were going with this policy here.
Mr. Papa.
Thank you, President Baron. I have a few questions here. Have we visited with other school districts that have already implemented this policy to see how they've gone about it and what they've learned so that we avoid some of their mistakes?
Yes, and I would say these guidelines are really based on that. We've talked with districts, we've looked at their guidelines and seen how it's been implemented. And I would say that in general, the feedback we get is that it goes very well. It's received very well, it's implemented well. Once everyone understands what those guidelines are and how it's going to be utilized and that the teacher is the one controlling when it's going to be used, that it has worked well. But, yes, we have met and talked with districts.
Did you see, in looking at those districts, did most of them roll it out to the entire district? Did they do it by school? Did they do it by school levels?
We've seen both. We've seen some, there have been some that implemented it in phases. Let's start at high school, then go junior high and elementary. And then, there's been some that they passed the policy, they set the guidelines and they implemented across the district. So, we really have seen both models in use.
Have you seen any that don't have it in certain grades? So, like elementary, none of the elementary schools have it or junior highs? Have you seen any of that at all?
So, are there any you can think of? Are there any that you can think of?
Nobody's helping you.
Were they having that elementary?
There are some in the top and elementary, but then we use elementary on it. And oftentimes, there's not.
Can you come up here to the microphone if you don't mind?
Sue gets to come up.
She's on her cellphone.
This is Sue McGahey. She's the Director of Instructional Technology.
Thank you, Ms. McGahey.
Thank you. I heard someone a moment ago mention the phrase "chomping at the bit," and they were referring to the junior high level. We have elementary teachers chomping at the bit over this issue as well. And Mrs. Pena is correct, lots of mobile devices being used in elementary classrooms. I taught at the elementary level for 17 years. I would definitely be one of those elementary teachers chomping at the bit. I would be watching the board meeting tonight. I would be thrilled to death as an elementary teacher if I was able to put this in place in the classroom. It might look different, a little different at the elementary level. For example, at the elementary level, I might send a newsletter home to my parents or email the parents and say, "On Thursday, we're working on a project where we're going to be using QR codes to solve problems. And if you would like to send your child to school with a device, that would be great." Certainly not mandatory. Oftentimes, elementary students inherit the cellphones when a parent gets a new model. So, when the iPhone 5 was recently released, many elementary students inherited iPhone 4s that are now serving just like an iPod Touch would. It's no longer used for making phone calls, but it does have the research capabilities, the app capabilities. So, many of these apps support curriculum so well. One that comes to mind is called ShowMe, where Stephen mentioned students working in groups, where students may be solving similar problems in groups. And the app called ShowMe allows students to record their voice as they explain their solution, as well as to write, jot down on a tablet their solution and then show that to the group. And each group can show how they solved the problem differently and that kind of thing. So, on a day when an activity like that is going on, I think this is very appropriate technology in an elementary. I would certainly first have met with students, explain the school district's mission, explain what we're trying to accomplish, why we're doing this, and certainly provide district-owned devices. I think as soon as you, if you do decide to phase it in, I think you will be hearing from elementary quickly, who encourage you to not ban the devices at that level.
Thank you, Ms. McGahey. Appreciate it. Great, great, great input there. You know, and I, before we even talked about starting in phases, I even had just running some targeted tests, you know, one high school, one junior high, one elementary, as soon as we can, so that we can see what kind of issues are arising and we can address those relatively quickly before we expanded it to the entire district. And then, it's a whole process of retraining everyone on new rules and new policies. So, that may be something, or even, you know, even one grade within a high school or something like that, just kind of a quick hit of a test that we can get, quick feedback, so that along with what Mr. Bowie was saying, we're making a lot of assumptions. Mr. Hogg, I'm sorry. We're making a lot of assumptions and so, maybe get some real feedback regarding that. I'm not sure why we focused on Facebook there for a little bit and why we block it. I don't know why we're afraid of Facebook and Twitter. I mean, is it just because it's new or is it because, I'm not sure why. We use Facebook to communicate, the school district uses Facebook to communicate information out to students. I keep up with what's going in different schools, what's going on in different schools, because I befriended their webpages and they're posting stuff all the time. Twitter, we get a lot of information from Twitter. Frankly, I think more of the students are moving towards Twitter than Facebook. And so, not sure why we need to continue to block Facebook and Twitter. They're just part of the technology out there and we really shouldn't be afraid. Anything can be misused or abused, but in and of itself, there's nothing wrong with it. Let's see, I completely agree on, you know, the, we can't block the cellphone usage. So, I mean, although you want them to use your network, if their network is faster, if you're not giving them access to something that they want, especially Facebook and Twitter, you're going to lose them anyway and then they're going to go to areas where you have zero control of. And so, you know, strategically, that might be better to allow them access to websites that inherently don't pose any threats. That way, they're not going off our network into their cellphone use and then they can do whatever they want. We have a lot of comments about elementary and, you know, one of the things that I pointed out when I ran is that I have kids in just about every level of the schools here. And I know we all have, but, you know, my kids are there right now. And so, I can tell you, you know, just from this parent's perspective, I don't let my elementary kids have phones. However, they all have iPod Touches. And let me tell you how amazing they are with those things. I mean, within a few days of introducing the technology to them, they already knew a lot more than I've known about my iPod and I've had it for years. So, you know, either we let them bring them, and Ms. McGahey made some great points about at the elementary level, at least giving the teachers the flexibility to say on specific days, "We encourage this." But, if we do that, I think we need to make sure and have enough devices for all the students that don't have those devices. And I think what I'm hearing, that may be Mr. Hibbs' concern, that we may be kind of putting pressure on parents at the elementary level where they, not as many have devices as the junior high kids and the high school kids. I think just about every high school student has a phone. I would say the vast majority of junior high students have a phone. And so, but yeah, I think the elementary, we may be putting undue pressure on parents to go and get a device for them. And so, we can make sure that we communicate that these are great devices, we don't want to limit our students' access to them, especially because of the educational potential that they have. So, if they want to bring their own, they're welcome to, but if they don't, it's okay, we have one here for them. If we do that, I'm okay with it, just to give them access, but not to put that pressure on the parents that they...
And again, the guidelines, I think, are written in such a way that really, the teacher is going to determine when it's used. And so, the teacher will be able to address that at the time. I mean, when they're not using technology, it doesn't matter who has it, it's going to be put away. If those times where the teacher is going to plan a lesson and technology is going to be utilized, then they would need to make sure that they have brought technology into the classroom or have it accessed in the classroom for students who didn't have it.
Okay. Couple of, on number 10, you mentioned specifically before and after school, certainly would support lunchtime. I mean, that's their free time. I would support that they have access to their devices during lunchtime. Loaning devices between students, I think you addressed that somewhere. I don't know that we can control that. And then, on number 17, oh, I'm sorry, it's 16. The whole issue of recording, taking pictures and all that, they do that extensively now. I think we're going to have to do some, a good deal of training with the students on what's appropriate, what's not appropriate. How do you get permission? Yeah, that gets real tricky with that. Students taking cameras into locker rooms and all that. I think there's a lot of training that's going to be necessary to make sure that we avoid any potential true issues with that. So... So I could see a situation where you can't bring your device unless you've gone through very specific training. But overall, I support the idea. I think it's a great idea, definitely at the high school, for sure at the junior high as well. I would not hesitate to put it in the junior high. And then elementary, you know, I'll tell you this, my fourth grader is dying to have a phone. I mean, she has an iPod, and she at least would like to have the texting capability, which we haven't even given her that, and she's a fourth grader. We've always made our junior, our children wait till junior high to have a phone, but I think she's pushing to have it a little sooner than that, and she's pretty convincing, so she may have one before then. But I think somebody, Dr. Raj mentioned, okay, you know, we're already kind of with the sixth graders, you know. If nothing, at least for sure, the sixth graders, I think, would be probably appropriate, because they're a lot more mature. Kindergarten, first, second, I can see there's some discussion there, Mr. Hibbs. I would be more likely to group the sixth graders with the junior highs. But anyway, the less control, I think, probably the better. We're giving them freedom to bring it, let them have the freedom to also make mistakes and learn from those mistakes. Thank you.
Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Byrne. I'd like to add just a little bit more into this discussion about the investment in this policy is really for instruction. And so while it's important, obviously, to have the guidelines in place as to when you can use the phone, we should be very mindful of investing in teacher training. Because while we open up this pipeline, it can quickly close, because if teachers aren't trained or don't allow the students to use them in their classroom, and in other settings they do allow them, it may cause another effect. So I think we have to be mindful, and I think Sue McGahey mentioned some of that, about training the teachers as to how to use these devices for instruction, and making sure it's integrated in our curriculum, and we have certain expectations. I think the other part that we should keep in mind is that, and Mr. Pompa, you mentioned that, responsible use of technology devices. And a continued effort, because as technology changes, as we unblock certain sites, the responsible use has to be reinforced, so that students have some background in that, but also understand the consequences. And that's a never-ending battle with responsible use of technology, because it continues to change. But first and foremost, that instructional component, the reason we're even entertaining this policy is because of our strategic plan, increase the rigor and the acceleration of our learning, of the students' learning. And that's where the teachers come in, because ultimately, the teachers will be the ones to decide whether they use them or not. Whether they can bring them is based on a policy, but whether you actually use them for learning is still in the teacher's purview. And so I think a significant investment in their training and the apps that are available and things like that, integrated fully into our curriculum, should be part of this as well. I want to add that.
Mr. Hogg.
Thank you, President Byrne. Mr. Harvey, when they log in, like, to get programs and things like that, would we be able to have them access on our Intranet site when they click into our network and get that? So, I mean, because the discussion came of, how do you keep them on our network? That's one way. Programs are doing, would have to be accessed through our network only. That's the only place they could access. Is that some of the discussion on there? Or if they're doing a technology training program, and it's using, you know, a certain application, could that be loaded for Androids, for iTunes, all those, so they could download that app on there?
Well, if I understand the question right, in general, as they're bringing their own devices in, they're bringing the apps in. I mean, it's not, the model's really kind of changed from what we used to see. I mean, if I bring my iPad into the network, I've already brought the apps.
Right.
I don't log into the network and download additional apps. iPads and Androids don't work that way. So I think that while that model actually is one that used to exist when it was more laptop-based, and you were hitting servers, and that's where the apps lived, it doesn't, that's not really the model anymore. We've kind of moved away from that, and the apps are really with the device. And I don't have a way to, if I'm going to use a certain iPad app, that I can log into the network and access the app there. The systems aren't designed that way.
They're still having to download the app somewhere.
Well, and with those, from some very specific places that aren't us, we cannot actually have a spot in the district where people download apps from. Apps, and we're talking about Apple, only can come from Apple, and Android only can come from Android.
Understand that. Ms. McGahey said it exactly right. I think we, and Mr. Pompa brought it up, I have a lot of faith in our teachers and principals. We'll let them make some decisions of what they're deciding. And so the more we limit someone, the more someone wants to do it. You know, the more you block, the more they're going to go around and try and rebel against the system. So I think we have to have a lot of faith in our teachers, in our principals, and I, Ms. McGahey, you made some great points. If you haven't, if you haven't gone to iTunes U and seen all the million programs that are there, from an educational standpoint, for K through three, through third grade, it's unbelievable. And what I, why I think it's a great idea, and you know, from, listen, the number one priority we're always going to face up here, and all seven of us are eight or so, is going to face, is safety's always going to be the number one concern. That's the number one concern over anything we do. We can't keep our kids safe, we can't do anything else. So that has to be a concern. But I'm not going to keep these kids, that they're fully wired and connected, the whole time they're at home, the whole time on the weekends, as much as I may not even like that, they are. And then all of a sudden, you come to school, and you're like, "Nope, sorry, not using it." You know, I just think, let our teachers who are knowing how to use that, and we have some that really embrace technology in that first grade, second grade level. And Ms. McGahey, you made a great point. I can name every single person I know, they get their old iPhone, and their kids are getting their old one. And so we're not talking about phones, we're not talking about all these pieces. We're talking about technology, devices, which are only going, every single day, get easier and easier to access, to have, and for every single person to be able to use. I think we roll it out for the entire district.
Mrs. Pena.
Mr. Harvey, I don't know if I made this up in my mind, or if I read it on one of the emails you sent out about all this, or if you said it in the work meeting. I don't know where I got this, so you can tell me if I made it up in my mind, if that's the case. But I thought in part of the surveys you did, that you surveyed the different levels of high school, junior high, and elementary, and what their perspective was on that, and that the high school principals were 100 percent, the junior high were something like 70 or something percent, and the elementary were only at 50 percent that wanted this. So did I make this up?
No, ma'am. There were a couple things, and there were some different questions that we were asking, really related to that. When we asked the question, were you, and this was with principals, and we also did with DIDC, are you in support of bring your own device? The percentage was very high across the board for all of them. They either responded yes, or they wanted more information. And it was in the 90 percent that they said yes, and that was true across all the levels. Where we began to see a differentiation between the levels was when we talked about utilization at lunch, was the mind, when high school says yes at lunch, junior high was 70 percent at lunch, and elementary was less than 50 percent at lunch. So that's where we saw the real differentiation. But when we asked the question, do you support the concept of BYOT, really across the board, the answer there was yes.
Okay. That was one of my questions. And then the other one was more of a statement. I've asked this, I think, since AISD started using Facebook and Twitter, and it's on our AISD website, I have wondered why we have it there but don't allow it. I mean, even in this that I have as a trustee, I can't get to Facebook if I so choose. And I find that, you know, a little offensive. So I can understand. Now, if someone were to abuse it, and I will tell you, because since I retired, I can say whatever I want about my past employment. Working for the federal government, they had blocked Facebook, YouTube, Twitter, and so on. And one day, the top guy, the guy at the top of Washington, I happened to be, no, for the Corps of Engineers. For the Corps of Engineers. I probably would have had this conversation with him, too, if he were there. Because as we know, I'm not afraid to say anything. He had done a YouTube video and sent it across as a mass email to all of us, but we were banned from using YouTube. So I went on my own device and watched it, because I think a great deal of the man, he's very intelligent and very well-spoken, and I admire him a great deal. And so he happened to be in our office for a change of command ceremony, and he remembered me because of something else I did. And so I said hello to him and told him I had a picture. I had made his picture my wallpaper, and he wanted to see it. So we walked over to my workstation, and I sat down, and he asked me why I liked that picture, and I explained it to him. And I said, "But sir, I have a question for you." I said, "You know that you put out an email that had a connection to YouTube?" And he said, "Yes." "Did you watch it?" I said, "Yes, sir, I did." "But do you also know that you have a policy that says that I can't?" And he said, "What do you mean?" I said, "You sent out a YouTube, but you tell, but the policy says I can't go to YouTube." And he said, "But you did it anyway?" I said, "Yes, sir, because it just didn't make sense to me. Why would you be sending that out? You're the top guy, and then I can't see it." And he turned to the guy, one of the staff members next to him, and he said, "Fix it." And that's kind of how I feel about Facebook being on our webpage. If it's on our webpage, and we want people to go there, why are we blocking it from our own devices? We have to have faith in our teachers and principals. And if they abuse it, which we were told, when they opened it up, they said, "There's a mechanism in technology that allows you to see what's going on in your system. And if you find someone," and it can go down to the person, "if you find someone who's abusing it, then you write them up." You know, if a teacher's on Facebook all during her class, we got a problem. But if they're just going in, let's say during their lunchtime, or something in the morning, or they're sending something out, I don't think we should be blocking it. And that's my viewpoint as a trustee, let's fix it.
I'm with you. Free Facebook.
Free Facebook.
Free Facebook. Yeah.
Oh, Mr. Hibbs, you're next.
I want to make sure that it's clear. I think that one of our associates here with the district assumed that I was saying that our students should be without technology, and that's not the case. I mentioned in the dinner session that I would like to see every one of our students, at least at the high school level, to begin to have one of these. I think this is the way of the future. I think that electronic textbooks are the way that we should be going. I believe that's the way that our discussion as a board should be working towards. I don't have a problem with people bringing iTouches, i-readers, old cellphones that are not activated. My concern all along, and I'll state it again, is that I do believe that we've got a disparity in our district, where at the elementary level, there are going to be some children whose parents, either like Mr. Pompa's, have made a decision that we're not going to have our children have cellphones until we believe that they're responsible. Maybe that's sixth grade. And I, as it just concerns the cellphone aspect of this, is what my biggest concern is. And I don't want, you know, I don't want the board to be sending the message to all parents that your kids have to have this technology. We're the district, we're responsible for providing these things, these tools that should be response, that these students should have. I believe absolutely, positively, a kindergartner should be having an iPad to be able to work with, or a netbook to work with in today's society. Absolutely. And for there to be any thought that that's not what I, or anyone thinking that I was saying anything differently, should not be there. Technology is going to be the absolute core. My whole concern is, I don't want there to be a, one group, because they're more affluent, that can afford to have their, all their kids carrying cellphones to school. I just want to make sure that we're in a position that we can be, have equality across, that, you know, if we have a technology day at Butler, that Atherton can have the same access to technology. And if their students don't have it, we're providing it. That's my whole purpose and my whole key concern here.
Mr. Harvey, if I had an iPad, how do I save my work on a district iPad?
If you're on a district iPad, in general, you're saving your work onto the district iPad. With an iPad in general, it's saved there, or it's saved into a cloud account.
Does the district have a cloud account for our iPads?
We can, yes.
Do we not?
It depends on the utilization and how we're utilizing, you know, what we're doing with the specific iPad. But yes, we can create accounts where we can save into the cloud.
Is an iPad a computer?
Yes.
Does an iPad come with a word processor?
You can, you can purchase a word processing program for an iPad. It comes with something called Notepad, which you can do basic word processing on.
Do our iPads have a word processor, or do they just have Notepad?
They all have Notepad, and it really is up to the, again, to the schools and how they're utilizing them. Some of them purchase the word processing, if that's one of the ways they're going to utilize that specific iPad. All of them have Notepad.
Do we have iTunes accounts for all of those iPads? Or how does that work?
We have iTunes accounts for all of those iPads.
Who pays?
No one. We don't, you have to have an, we use them to download free apps, and then we actually use a different system where we actually, if a teacher is going to purchase apps, they do it through a district system, and we send them a link that, we buy volume licensing, and we work directly with Apple, and we'll get a link. For instance, if it pages is what they were purchased, we send that link to the teacher. When they click the link, it downloads it at that point. So there's no credit cards and money being exchanged at that point. We can do that centrally.
Can our iPads do email?
Yes.
The ones that the kids use?
Well, we control that. There's a feature, whether you have access to the email system or not. With student iPads, we don't activate the email system. Now, we have our own email system, so teacher iPads utilize that, but we do not utilize the email system that is built into the iPad.
And our teachers still have the ability to confiscate phones, is that right?
Yes.
Is that still going on?
Yes.
For 15 bucks?
Yes.
Is it a moneymaker?
I want to say it's a revenue.
What?
It generates revenue.
Is it revenue positive? Generates revenue, okay. To go with Mr. Hibbs' comment about the social inequity of taking care of kids at one school and not another, for the most part, are our Title I schools iPad-equipped?
Yes.
The elementaries?
All of our schools have iPads.
Then is that an issue?
Is it an issue that?
If I'm an elementary teacher and I want to have a technology day, is it a problem for me to get enough iPads to take care of all my kids, if that's what it takes?
All of our campuses have access to be able to get iPads in the classroom if they're trying to do activities, or netbooks, or laptops, whatever the technology that they're trying to utilize.
I kind of think Facebook and Twitter are blocked because they're so habit-forming. Truth? Now, whether we unblock them or not, I'm sure the board will have something to say about that, but I don't have a problem with unblocking all of them. I understand the issues with YouTube, or because once we unblock it, we can't control what comes through. Is that correct?
That's really true with any of these things, but yes. YouTube is unblocked. YouTube is unblocked for teachers now.
Our iPads, do they all have the camera capability?
The, the first model of iPad, which we do own some, did not have a, a camera. iPad twos and threes have cameras and they all have that.
Including a video capability?
Yes.
And a sound recording?
Yes.
So when the guidelines come back, we'll need to specifically address photographs, videos, and sound recording in classrooms. I think, like Mr. Pompous talked about, the cameras in locker rooms, I think all that in the classroom is also going to be an issue. There are problems with posting student images, student class projects without parental permission to the internet. And I can see that's a whole area that we need to really look at before we get too wild here. And I'm going to wrap this up now. What we'd like the administration to do is come back with guidelines for next time that we can vote on. Anybody got any real hard wishes that, what they want to see changed in these guidelines? I know I do. Well, let me talk, let me, y'all go first, first. First, first. If anybody's got some hard guidelines they want to see added to this list or deleted from the list. Dr. Rice?
I would just say, yeah, Mr. Pompous brought up the, pretty much the same points that I had concern with, uh, as far as the, the realistic, uh, outcome of this, as far as no, no sharing. Maybe that's something we have to have included just as our own protection, but the reality is they share, they borrow.
I absolutely agree on that one and I think that's going to have to go away.
Okay, okay. And then there was, I'd have to look at this, maybe I'll come back, but I don't know. There was one other one that it was the same type of thing. It seemed rather unrealistic, but I'll just leave it at that right now.
Others? Mr. Pompous?
I would like to see if we're going to specifically, uh, address times when they can use them, where it says before and after school, I'd like to see lunch added to that.
Would you want to be specific about at schools that have?
Or even better, you know, just remove those suggestions and allow the principals to decide when it's appropriate for their students to use it. Is it appropriate to use it before, after school, past period, lunch, whatever? Uh, that way, uh, just, you know, they, they can be, we're not being so prescriptive with it. Allow them to, uh, put a policy for their campus that, that makes sense. That's my suggestion.
Okay. Let's let the administration figure that out and tell us what they think is best. Legally, if we have a technology day and the kids lose their little phones, are we in any jeopardy, is legal? Shaking the head, no, okay, that's good. Thank you. It's nice to see you, by the way. Do you need any more guidance? We want guidelines we can vote on next time. And if it, if you have to survey the, the principals about anything, including how many, what percent of the kids really have phones, what, that could do this? Not just a phone, but something they can access the internet.
Device.
Technology, all right. Because I've been interested, because I know in my building it's very low. I was surprised when we tried to do a survey today. It's real low. Thank you, Mr. Harvey.
I have, I have one final.
One final?
Of course.
This is it, the last one.
Okay. Just to be very clear, um, the, these are guidelines, so we're, we're approving them as a board, just, just to say, okay, we're all on the same page here.
After that, we would still do policy and student code of conduct and teacher training. It's not going to open the door right away.
Okay. And, uh, and I, I guess added to that, so other districts, they don't have an actual policy as far as BYOT or anything.
And also you're saying, and there's really nothing in our policy?
Right.
That has to, that really deals with this.
Okay. And then I, I was just curious, in, in looking at other districts, well, first off, I don't know if, if we said it, thank you so much. I mean, a lot of, a lot of thought, a lot of work, really appreciate it, really, really appreciate it. It's a great direction that we're going in here. So I, you put a lot of thought and a lot of work into it. Related to that, I was curious if, uh, we had looked, I would assume nationally, at districts all over the place, not just necessarily.
Sure, there's a lot of articles. I mean, this is really a very hot topic right now.
Right, right.
And there's a lot of articles, a lot of examples, a lot of case studies from across the country.
Yeah, thank you so much for doing this and we're excited.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey.
Thank you.
We're going to adjust the discussion items somewhat. The next item to be discussed will be curriculum and assessment audit. Dr. Cabasos.
Thank you, President Barron. This is a, an item that is part of our strategic plan to conduct a curriculum audit. And so I know that we've had a lot of discussion and it's a central piece of our strategic plan, along with our facilities assessment, et cetera. So this evening, we have Holly Captain, is that correct? Holly Captain, uh, who will speak to us about the curriculum audit proposal. And remember that this is a, a proposal that they've submitted, as we requested for proposals. And so Holly will give you information about the specifics of the audit and then certainly answer any questions the board may have about the audit. Holly, welcome. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening. I will present to you about the audit, but I encourage you to ask questions while I'm presenting, because if you have questions while I'm addressing it, don't, don't hesitate to interrupt me, because I've done this many times and I know the audit backwards and forwards and so it would not derail me in any way. Okay, this is not. There, okay. All right. So you all submitted a request for qualifications about, um, doing a curriculum and assessment audit, or what we call a curriculum management audit. And really, the purpose of audits is to give school districts, to give school boards like yourselves, administrators, community members, a very comprehensive look at how well the system is doing in meeting its objectives. And of course, the primary objective is student learning. And so we identify where a school district is in its quest for quality. So how well is the system meeting student needs and how well are kids learning across the district? So, um, the, the scope of what an audit looks at is listed here in these bullets. The first one, of course, is curriculum and instruction. So that's really our primary focus. So curriculum in terms of what is it that students are supposed to be learning or walking away with? What, what are the concepts, knowledge, skills? And then instruction is the delivery of that content, the delivery of that to the students and how well they're actually mastering it. And I like to use the term mastery as opposed to just learning, because I think many times we assume that students have learned, when in fact, they perhaps have not. Or maybe they already knew it when they came in and it wasn't our teaching that, that taught them that, they already knew it ahead of time. So, um, we look at any aspect of a school district operations that can enhance or hinder curriculum design and delivery. So in other words, um, let's take food service. We would look at food service if we find out that breakfast, serving breakfast at certain buildings, um, or lunch is in fact, cutting in on classroom time because things aren't being served on time and kids are losing, say, 10, 10 minutes of instruction every day, which can end up being several hours over the course of a semester. So anything, even as tangential, as tangential as it may seem, such as busing, um, facilities issues, if they do impact curriculum and instruction, then we, we include those in the scope of the audit report. And we also look at how well has a system been able to set directions for people, for student goals, student achievement and their well-being? How well has the system then devoted resources to achieving those goals? And then, in doing so, has the district or system been able to improve its performance over time by looking at data and feedback?
Will the audit assess the relevancy, relevancy and effectiveness of the, of the actual curriculum?
Yes, we certainly can.
To be in line with our long-term stated vision, mission, strategic objectives and all that?
Yes. For example, Dr. Cabasos was sharing with me today, one of your goals on having rigorous, cognitively rigorous instruction with technology in the classroom. So we would look at, uh, not just your written curriculum to see if those, if that goal is reflected in the written curriculum, but also in what's actually happening in classrooms, in the taught curriculum. So as teachers are teaching, are we seeing evidence of rigorous instruction and rigorous learning in the classroom? And are we seeing students using technology as part of their learning and teachers using technology as part of their instruction? So that is one of the things that we deal.
Okay, all right, thanks. And, and then the, you, you answered that, the question that I was going to ask right at, at the end. You measure the improvement of the performance based on what, evac? Or what'd you say?
Based on data and feedback? So feedback, right. So the feedback from data.
That's what I was going to say.
Evac, sorry.
Okay.
Feedback from whatever data instruments, whatever instruments that you have in place. And we also look at those instruments too, to determine their adequacy, their alignment, um, and if you're getting enough data, proper data for the kinds of decisions that you need to make.
Okay.
Because we have different instruments for determining different things.
Okay, all right, thanks.
I have a question related to that. With regard to our vision, uh, strategic plan, uh, long range, uh, we, we definitely have elements in there to be globally competitive. So we, we want to look at our curriculum and assess its needs and audit our abilities existing and what we need as far as gaps, nationally as benchmarks, internationally as benchmarks. And to be honest, I have no idea what those are, how, how they equate to us here in Texas or here in the U.S. Will you be looking at that globally?
If that's, that is certainly a request that we can, that we can attend to. We've done that actually, um, in other countries and then with other states, where we have looked at their curriculum and, and checked it for quality or compared it against international sources. So you have, for example, IB programs here in the district, but the IB curriculum is a good source, um, for a type of global curriculum, since it does exist internationally, that we could check, um, the, your own state student expectations against those, your own curricular expectations against, um, expectations internationally. We can look at curriculum from other countries, as well as, uh, I would recommend this, the Common Core standards, um, to look at Texas expectations against those, because there's been a real shift in the rigor and in the focus of, of the kinds of tasks that students are expected to do for college and career readiness. Um, and we're seeing that shift in the assessments that are being developed, because we now have some sample assessment items and they are significantly different from anything people have been doing before, in terms of how kids are expected to demonstrate their, their thought processes as well as their knowledge. So those are really good questions. And yes, we've done it before and it would be, um, a matter of adding that to the contract so that you could get, we call that a quality screen or a validity screening, so that you know that you are globally competitive.
And is that a, a complimentary add? I would assume not.
Um, it kind of depends on how in-depth it needs to be and that's something that, we, we could do that as an additional analysis that wouldn't necessarily be part of what the onsite team would do, but would be an offsite team and that's fairly cheap. I mean, that usually only adds, you know, a couple thousand dollars to the entire proposal amount.
Okay.
Um, and now it depends too, on how in-depth we would do it, if we were doing every single content area, or at least the four core areas at every single grade level. Um, when we did this for the Bermuda Ministry of Education, we had appendices, we did all four core content areas, we compared them against IB and a couple of the state standards. Um, this is pre-C common core and we had over 400 pages of analyses. So it can be a lot, it can be sometimes more information than you even want, but we can do it and I don't think it's cost prohibitive.
And you probably have, seeing you have experience with it, different, uh, different levels?
Yes.
That you can show us so that we can pick if something might be kind of out of the reach.
Right. For example, if you were really concerned, say, on math and science, then we could focus on those content areas, we could focus on all four of the core. When we get beyond core content areas, it becomes a little more problematic to find sources of curriculum in different areas.
And, and those four core areas, is that consistent internationally?
Um, well, IB is a little different because they have more of a, like a humanities-type focus. Where you're doing language arts, but you're doing it integrated with social studies and history-type content. And so, like, the Common Core has been structured in a similar fashion, where you, you're doing English language arts, but it's expected that that incorporates multiple content areas while you're teaching it. It's intended to transcend just English language arts and move into science and social studies in those areas. So, um, I would say that there's still a tension to the core content areas, but I, internationally, there's more of an expectation for integration.
And that's actually in our strategic plan is cross, uh, cross-curricular, uh, cross con, uh, content area, subject matter.
Yeah.
So that's why I was asking, because that's the direction we want to go. I just want to make sure that this has the elements in it.
Yeah. And I would say that that's a trend, as, as reflected in the Common Core, that that is a trend nationally, that people are aware that they need to integrate more. We're seeing states that are just not teaching certain content areas at all, because it's no longer being tested. And that's definitely not where we want to be.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Yeah, sure. Okay, so the three main pieces that we look at when we're doing a curriculum management audit, and we would be looking at this in Arlington, would be the written curriculum, that's the first form of curriculum. And the written curriculum is where it's written down what kids should be walking away with, concepts, skill, uh, knowledge and skills. And that should be able to be translated into what teachers are doing in the classroom. Then we look at what is actually being taught or delivered in the classroom. And this is important, because many times, it's just assumed that if it's a written expectation, that's actually what's being taught. In fact, we see sometimes teachers assuming that that is what they're teaching, when in fact, what kids actually are walking away with may be different than what you intend them to be walking away with. And then you can see that sometimes in test scores, when you have test scores that are not at the level that you want them to be or where they need to be. Then we look at the tested curriculum, the assessments. And so these are the three main forms of curriculum and we look to see the degree to which these are aligned. And so, um, and it's important with, with the third piece, the tested curriculum, that you have multiple measures in place for determining student learning and for measuring student progress. And that's very important, because you don't want to put all your eggs, so to speak, in one test basket. Because the star, for example, is not the only thing, the only measure that you want for student learning.
But you do make sure that the assessments are aligned with?
Yes.
Any state, as well as with our, our own accountability metrics, let's say.
Right. And this is a big piece of what we do, because we never assume alignment. We just don't. We're obnoxiously attentive to this, where we are looking at your written documents, we look at all the curriculum guides, we look at every form of written curriculum we can get, including what your state provides to you, as well as what you've developed in-house. But then we're also looking at what is actually delivered in the classroom. And I think that that's a huge piece of this, because that's the greatest potential for breakdown between what you want students to be learning and what's actually being delivered in, in the classroom. And there can be a lot of work going on at central office, that maybe is not being attended to or utilized or successfully implemented at school sites. So what we do is, we interview people across the district, as many people as we can talk to, every board member, all the senior administrative team, all the curriculum staff, all the principals, all the curriculum specialists, and as many teachers as we can get a hold of, including and community members and parents, anybody that wants to come in and talk to us. So we do that, that data collection. Then we actually visit schools, we observe in classrooms, we collect data from those observations. So we collect data about the taught curriculum in a couple of different ways. We're actually collecting observational data where we write down and re- We're actually collecting observational data where we write down and record what we're seeing. What do we see the teachers doing? What do we see students doing? We'll record what we see as being the taught objective. What is the actual objective that appears kids to be learning or practicing when we're in the room? We'll also record things on the cognitive type of, of the learning activities. So, in other words, how or at what level are kids cognitively engaged when they are working on an assignment or in the middle of a lesson with their teacher? And then we also collect artifacts. And what those are, are the written assignments or work that students are expected to complete or that they are completing while we're in the classroom. And so, that gives us a pretty comprehensive, or as comprehensive as we can get in the amount of time that we're here, comprehensive picture of what the taught curriculum actually looks like. And so, from those written artifacts, including our observational data, we can report back to you, okay, well, we were here in this classroom one time during this week, five days out of the 180-plus days during the year, here's what we saw. Here's the dominant mode of teacher engagement, here's the dominant mode of student engagement. Here, here of all the, say, elementary math classes that we saw, here are the percentage that we're working at application level or analysis or, or we're synthesizing information. Maybe we can report that back to you. We also do a thing that we call calibration of student work, where we actually determine what is the objective that the student work is having the kids practice and we calibrate that against your student expectations or your curriculum. So, for example, if it's a fourth grade math assignment, we look at those problems, we determine, alright, this, this entire assignment is on fractions and we see how it's being practiced, the kind of work that students are doing, then we look for that in the written curriculum. And do we find it at fourth grade? Maybe it's actually content that is first introduced at third grade. Or maybe it's work that may be more appropriate at third grade, but they're doing it at fourth grade. So, is, or maybe it's actually fifth grade work, but they're doing it at fourth grade, which is, that's the, that's the kind of mistake in calibration that you want to see. You want to see kids doing things earlier than you expect them to. And so, we'll report that out. What percentage of the time work was on level, below level, above level? And we, and we can even include and give back to you all the artifacts that we collected while we were in the classrooms cause we saved those, we tagged them, labeled them and use those as a data source. And it's just helpful, it's good information. It's a good mirroring back to you of what was going on in Arlington classrooms at a point in time.
Is your benchmark for on-level the state TEACs or is there some other standard that you use to say what is on-level?
We use what is supposed to be governing your teaching. So, in that instance, we would use the state TEACs, those student expectations that are arranged by grade level. Now, sometimes, cause we've done this many times in Texas, your student expectations are actually too vague to discern a specific difference between, say, what third grade performance looks like versus, say, fifth grade. Maybe the student expectation is identical four years in a row. That, that happens. So, in that case, that reveals to you, well, here's a flaw in the student expectations. Because we don't know, what does it look like at fourth grade versus sixth grade or third grade versus fifth grade? And so, that's, that's a real disadvantage for your teachers. So, we, we point that out and we'll say, well, really this is work that's being done at fifth grade, but could it just as easily be third grade work? So, that then alerts you to say, okay, so there's a lack of specificity there. And then our recommendation to you is you have to fix that. You have to define for the teachers what that is specifically at those grade levels so that a fifth grade teacher knows with assurance, this is fifth grade work. So, that's one of those things that we say, you can't assume or leave it to chance.
I just wanna ask kind of a terrifying question and this may be for Dr. Cavassos. We talked about the instructional model. Where does curriculum fit within the instructional model? Is it the instructional model or is it a part of the instructional model?
You wanna go first?
Who wants to take it?
Sure, we had, we had a discussion about that. As we design our instructional model, well, let me back up. The curriculum audit will yield items or, or components of an instructional model that they recommend based on what we're doing, if that makes sense. And we talked about the parallel work of researching and then eventually selecting our own instructional model, that this actually works well because the audit would reflect back to you, these are components of the instruction that need to be beefed up and included in an instructional model. So, they do work, I think, in parallel and that's, that's what we talked about earlier is you can do this work in parallel. You don't wanna jump too far ahead and adopt an instructional model until you see the audit results. But do the work at the same time because a lot of the findings will come back as these are components that are gaps in, in the current instruction. An example is differentiated instruction. If, if that's something we're researching as a model and the audit comes back and says there's some or, or a good amount or very little of differentiated instruction, then you balance that against, okay, well, then this is a gap to improve our performance. And that's the model that you start leaning towards. That's a summary of, of our discussion. But these two things run in parallel, basically, cause we're gonna do both, right? We're gonna do a curriculum audit and then this year is also the year that we would be researching and recommending.
And that, that was my concern about doing a, an instructional model, having that recommendation or that research without already having the curriculum audit. And, and I guess it, kind of in my mind, it seems like this curriculum audit comes before and the information that we are going to be able to pull from this audit would then drive our search for or our identification of the appropriate curriculum model for the school district.
Right. And I think, I think that's in essence correct.
You're saying you're not gonna wait till the end, but, but it is gonna be a strong influence on, on which model you eventually, eventually settle on.
Absolutely.
Because you'll get information from, from.
Absolutely. But what we don't wanna do is, is wait until the audit is finally, finally done to then start looking at an instructional model. And that's the part that I was trying to clarify is that we would be doing some of that work parallel. But yes, absolutely using the audit results to then drive the final recommendation.
And in that line, the, the, they wouldn't, wouldn't both work independently, that we would do the curriculum management audit and the instructional model, would we have recommendations from the curriculum management audit on what instructional model specifically? With some specificity on where we're, what we need to change and the gap, for the gaps?
Well, what we do with the curriculum management audit, we don't have a bias on the types of strategies and approaches that teachers should use in the classroom. We say that's something that should be loosely held. Teachers are the professionals that can decide how they're going to teach required content. The content that was tightly held. I mean, those are the objectives that students are expected to walk away with. But with an instructional model, what that is for us and, and our expectation is that you at least have one. We don't necessarily say you have to have a specific one, but we say that you have to have at least something in place that suggests for teachers how they're to be structuring instruction in order to meet student needs. So, for example, when you don't have any kind of instructional model or at least some expectations in place and policy or other places regarding instruction, if I go into, say, 100% of your classrooms and 90% of the time I see direct instruction, whole group, that tells me that it's pretty much a one-size-fits-all approach, at least what I saw at that point in time. So, if then I look at your test scores and I see, no, you have quite a few underperforming kids, but everybody's being taught the same thing at the same time, that's a disconnect. And so, I would point, we would point that out to you in the audit. And so, then a recommendation would be, you know, in, in congruence with, say, the idea behind RTI, how are teachers in a classroom addressing the different needs of students and accelerating those kids who are behind and moving ahead those kids that are on or above level? So, they're challenged as well and not being held back while they're trying to get other kids to catch up. Because that is, I think, the classic challenge in classrooms when you have diverse students, diverse student body, diverse student needs. So, we say we want to see an instructional model, something in place, something that describes for teachers, you know, here's what we wanna see when we go into classrooms. We wanna see a balance. There's a time and a place for direct instruction, there's a time and a place for small groups, there's a time and a place for doing centers while a teacher's working with different groups of students for individual work. You know, so if, there's some suggestions to teachers on how to structure that time and approach their teaching so that it's responsive to student needs. Our bias, when we talk about this, this, how the, the written taught and tested curriculum connect, our bias is that assessments that are in place are formative in nature. We have a bias towards formative assessment because everybody has summative measures in place. But that assessment is most useful for the classroom teacher in planning instruction to meet students' needs. That for us is really our bias because everything we talk about in an audit, even if we're talking about busing, food service, whatever it is, it is still focused on how it impacts student learning. How are we improving what and how much kids are learning and what they're able to do with that learning? So that when they leave here, when they graduate, what are they taking away with them? What are they able to do? So, everything that we focus on has that emphasis, that focal point, student learning. Cause that's really what schools are supposed to be all about. Any other questions about this? Well, I just wanted to include, just, we have some principles that govern our work. And I think it's important to note those because although they're not huge things, they are important. Every one of our auditors is an experienced educator. They all have experience at different levels of the system. And so, we're not just taking CPAs who decided they didn't wanna do accounting anymore and now wanna do school auditing. That's not what we do. We have people, they are educators. And the most important piece of that is that they've done it, they've lived it and that's critical. We also have a principle of independence, which means that we don't involve people in the team that have some vested interest in the school district because that could violate the objectivity of what we're trying to do and what we're trying to provide to you. So, if somebody's worked here, we would exclude them from the team. If somebody has close personal friends here or has done work for the district, we would not include them on the team. Our principle of objectivity is that when we report to you a finding, we are not just reporting hearsay. We are triangulating our findings with multiple sources of data. Even, now, there are times where we have reported findings that are based on interview reports. But we only do that when it's an overwhelming amount, an overwhelming percentage of the people we've interviewed and then we present it as such. So, and I've done actually complete findings that were completely supported by interview data. And we're very careful, we don't say, this is the way it is. We say, this is what people reported. We're very careful that anything we present in a finding, we can defend in a court of law. Because we've had to do that. Dr. English says, if I have to defend it in the witness chair, I want to be able to do it well. So, then we have a principle of consistency. So, when we audit, we use similar methods. We always take into consideration the specific and unique contexts of the systems that we are in. So, when we're in the Texas system, we're very attentive to the TEACs, we're very attentive to the testing system of the state. We take all those things into consideration, but there is incredible consistency in our methodology and in how we collect our data. And by the way, we have done over 400-plus audits in the last 25 years, 25-plus years. And then the principle of materiality. We work very hard to hone in on those issues that are most important or material to the district. So, we, we may do a lot of analyses along the way. We try not to bog you down with data. We're starting to put more and more data in appendices so that the raw data are there, you can see them. But really, the report itself, we try to focus in on those issues which are most critical to your success and to your improvement. And that's why no two audits are ever exactly alike because no two systems are ever exactly alike. And then we have a principle of full disclosure where we, we try to protect confidentiality in interviews. We do that by not using any names in the report. We typically only name the members of the board and the, the current superintendent of the system. But in terms of sharing with you everything that we've looked at, that is, we consider that to be open, an open book. So, I was asked today if we would share the artifacts that we collected in classrooms. And I said, well, absolutely, they're yours. I mean, we collected them, but we would absolutely give those back to you. So, that's our principle of full disclosure. We try to be as transparent as possible. And incidentally, in interviews, while we assure people we don't use names, we can't guarantee that we would never reveal somebody's identity. We're not journalists. There've been a very, very few incidences where we have had to share names in interviews, although we try to minimize that. And those are really extenuating circumstances. So, those are our principles governing the work that we do. These are the five standards. The, the five standards are the same, they've been the same for the last, since 1979 when the first audit was conducted. And so, we look for control, that a system can demonstrate it has control over its resources, its programs and its personnel. We look for, under standard two, clear and valid objectives for students. Then standard three has to do with internal consistency and rational equity. So, what that means is, does the right hand know what the left hand is doing? Is there consistency across the system at a level and among levels within the system? And is there equity? And if you ask Dr. English of the five standards, if he could only keep one, which one he would keep, it would be this one because it's the equity standard. Because we are passionate about public schools serving all its, all of its children. And that all children have a level playing field and that schools are actively trying to level that playing field for them so that they have equal access to programs and an equal chance of success. So, that's something that we do look at under standard three. So, we do subgroup comparisons and equity analyses and program enrollments and things like that. Then standard four has to do with assessment and feedback. How well is the system evaluating its progress and using the results of assessments to make decisions? And that has to do, that means every single level. So, at the district level as well as building level, all the way down to the classroom level, are teachers using results from assessments to make decisions on instruction? And then the last standard is the productivity standard. Is there a question?
Yeah, let me ask you a question on assessments. I know you'll address, I guess, assessments later on, but do you evaluate the effectiveness of the actual assessments in their validity or, validity or predictability to tell us, okay, yes, these assessments can predict success at, at the points we want success?
We don't do a lot of psychometrician-type work from that perspective. But what we do talk about are the different types of assessment instruments that are available to a system, how they're being used, the appropriateness with which they're being used. So, in other words, we've been in systems where they have an interim or a benchmark assessment that they're administering twice a year, but the way, and they're calling it a formative assessment, but the way they're using that assessment was actually more summative in how it was being used. And so, we, we addressed with the district that it was a valuable assessment because you never wanna leave everything till the last, till the high-stakes test to see how your kids are doing. I mean, that just doesn't make sense. So, this test did have, and, and they had a statistics department, a testing and accountability department that was, was actually performing correlation analysis to see, did these benchmark assessments predict success on the tax, the then-tax and then the STAR? And it did have a pretty strong correlation. I mean, it was, it was a pretty good assessment for predicting performance. So, from that standpoint, the test had value. How they had been using it, however, was sort of in conflict with what its purpose was purported to be. So, and, and then we also found that different principals were using it in different ways. Some said, no, we're gonna use this for grades. And others said, no, we absolutely can't use that for grades, it's totally inappropriate. So, those kinds of inconsistencies really can impact, well, it's, it's wrong for it to be, it's, it's not helpful for it to be inconsistent across a system like that, so we identify that. But then it means that somebody's using the test inappropriately, not for what it's really intended for. So, then in that situation, as an example, we determined that there weren't sufficient formative assessments in place. So, we look at assessment from the very global perspective of everything that assessment has to do. There's a time and a place for all different kinds of assessments. We have a bias for formative because that's the most useful for teachers. And so, we talk about and we expect to see some types of diagnostic formative assessments in place. And then we have. And then we have criteria for evaluating their quality and also evaluating the effectiveness with which they're used or implemented. So that's what we look for. Now, in a few instances, we will, particularly with district-developed benchmark or interim-type assessments, we will actually look at the instrument itself. And we'll look to see how well it aligns with state assessments, your own district expectations, and how well it aligns with the curriculum. So for example, if every assessment I see in your district is multiple choice, and that's the only mode of student response a student is ever expected, how they're ever expected to demonstrate their learning on an assessment given in AISD. But I, but I see an expectation for rigorous instruction and problem-solving and critical thinking. That's, there's a lack of alignment there in the type of cognition, as well as the context, how kids are demonstrating their learning. So we would point that out as being a misalignment. We get into alignment, we love getting into alignment. We get into it about as deep as you can. So these are just the specific criteria or characteristics that we look for under each district standard. So standard one, under control, this is where we look for curriculum that is, so any locally-developed curriculum that it's adopted by the board, so that it is a district-adopted document. Then it has, there's accountability attached to it when it is. We look to see that there are policies, plans. This is the standard under which we examine the table of organization and the administrative structure. We look at job descriptions. We also look at, with plans, we look at strategic plans. We look at the quality of the plan itself, as well as the degree to which the plan is aligned with campus improvement plans, or that those plans align back to the strategic plan. Because we would expect those connections to be very present and obvious between system-level and then building-level plans. And then we also look at that line of authority and how the organizational structure functions. Does it work to support alignment? Or is there a major disconnect between, say, central office work and what's happening at individual schools? And if so, where do we see a breakdown in the organizational structure? Because many times, there is a breakdown somewhere. Under standard two, we are looking there at the actual curriculum. This is our direction or our curriculum standard. And here, we look to see, are there clearly defined goals and objectives for students and for student learning? We look to see if there is a framework. So for example, you have your district expectations for that rigorous instruction in your strategic plan. Do we see that reflected in your objectives for students? And do you have objectives or district-level curriculum that augments or refines what the state has provided to you? And then is there explicit direction for the roles in the, across the district in managing curriculum design and delivery? We look for that as well, under standard two. And then do we see local control? And that's pretty important, because even though there's a lot of expectation, there are a lot of expectations at the state level, local districts still have quite a bit of power and control over how things are done within the district. And that's important, because that work at the local level is so critical to ensuring success for students.
Okay, so you're looking for local at the district level, but not at the campus level?
No, we have pretty clear criteria regarding what's loosely held at the campus level versus what's tightly held at the system level. And at the system level, we want to see objectives and assessments tightly held. Those are the non-negotiables.
Well, that fit within our concept of, uh...
MPE.
MPE.
Absolutely. MPE, part of MPE is that you tightly manage the curriculum and the assessment at the district level, and that's not an autonomy that a school, a campus gets.
Okay, they get the autonomy of...
Over how?
How.
Yeah, and that's a lot.
Okay.
And in MPE, over those things that we would determine, such as staffing and formulas and funding. But the curriculum still remains very tightly managed.
I just wanted clarification on what the local had applied to there. Okay, thanks.
No, those are good questions. I'm, I'm hesitant to ever show our list of what's tightly held and loosely held because we're considered by some to be radical with what's loosely held. Because it's often misunderstood. Because when you hold some things loosely, but you don't hold the necessary things tightly, or you hold loosely can blow up in your face. If you don't have objectives and assessments tightly held, then you're holding other things loosely, and then you get chaos. And so that is, that is the worst-case scenario. But, but we, we see teachers as educated professionals that should be treated as educated professionals. They're the ones that should be able to and have the power and autonomy to decide, well, what's the best way to reach this student? What's the best way to teach this child so they can be successful? That's an important balance.
Well, then I guess let me ask the follow-up question. Will you be able to make an evaluation of MPE as it relates to what we're doing? I mean, to make sure that what we want to achieve in terms of our curriculum and our instructional model is supported by MPE or is not supported by MPE? I mean, that's probably not part of what you proposed, but would it be appropriate for that evaluation to be made as part of this curriculum assessment?
I, I think by, by the nature of its design, you know, there's, there's managed empowerment, there's performance empowerment at the other end, and there's MPE in the middle, managed performance empowerment. The performance empowerment is basically, every campus, every classroom has autonomy over the curriculum and standards and all that. We're on MPE, which is still tightly managing that curriculum. I think that what this will reflect, if I understand it correctly, what this will reflect is where there is autonomy being taken to, to not implement the curriculum in some places and things like that, where it's reflected back to the district, that this is something that campuses or a campus, et cetera, may have too much autonomy, self, self-given autonomy, I guess.
Well, I guess the concern is here, when, when you're evaluating our system, MPE will not be part of it yet. We're going to MPE. And heeding the warning that you just brought to light, obviously, that as we create the policies for the district that are going to drive MPE, that we do make sure to tightly hold those things which need to be tightly held. And that we give autonomy into things that, where autonomy should be given. So if, if we can have some guidance to, to know that, yes, these are the right things to allow for local control, and these are the right things to allow, or to make sure that we have district-level control.
And, and part of the same kind of parallel track is setting those standards that must be met in order to receive any autonomy. That's part of the performance, is what are those performance targets? And, and then what kind of autonomy do you get, so?
Yeah, because I'm, I'm thinking you guys are going to get a very deep look into our entire organization, our entire system. And, and you'll be in a, in a very advantageous spot to make those kind of observations, recommendations, evaluations as to when we're forming policies and procedures for MPE to say, "That doesn't make sense, that doesn't make sense." So just give us an evaluation on that.
And when we do make recommendations, we're, we're very, we try to be extremely conscientious to, to acknowledge the things that are sort of in the middle of being decided. You know, when you, when you are addressing issues and talking about specific things, or you've started to put things into place, we are very conscientious about acknowledging those things, affirming those things, so that, we never say, you know, "Throw the baby out with the bathwater," because that's just not efficient. What we do is, we say, "No, this is a good system in place. It can be improved by doing this or modified, you know, accordingly. And then it's going to really do what you need it to do." And so I don't think there's anything in, in what you've discussed that would be contrary to what, you know, what we would be recommending. So, so under standard two, and I wanted to show this because I think this is important, the kinds of analyses that we do when we talk about alignment. So we look at the written curriculum, but then we look, and the curriculum resources. Because, you know, what teachers are using to support their teaching, those resources and materials can sort of derail your alignment as well. But we look to see, do, does your written curriculum or your written curriculum documents and the curriculum resources and materials in use, do they align with your state standards? So that's one type of analysis that we do. Does the written curriculum and your curriculum resources align with the state test as much of it as we can see? So we look at all the released items. Does the taught curriculum, what we're observing in the classroom? Because we never assume, again, that the taught and the written are perfectly aligned. Does the taught curriculum align with the state standards? And does the taught curriculum align with the state test? But then we also look at, does the taught curriculum align with the written curriculum? And I was asked today if we report this out by, by individual school. And I said, "No, we do not. We collect the data." I mean, we always put school names on things. But one of the reasons that we don't report this kind of data by school is because we don't want this to be about an individual or a witch hunt. And so we report findings at a system level, because it's about system productivity and effectiveness. And even though we all know that we may have weak schools or strong schools, we want to be very careful that people don't perceive this as, my school could be identified as, you know, a major problem. Now, obviously, when we look at test scores and we look at performance, those are things that we do look at by school. Everybody's looking at those by school, and that's already public information and public knowledge. But we're very careful about reporting things by school. Typically, we will report things by level. So we might say, "Well, all the elementary schools will report data on just those, and then junior high or middle, and then high school." So even though we could do it by school, we're careful not to. All right. Under standard three, the kinds of things we're looking at is to see, is there articulation and coordination? In other words, is there a clear spiraling, a connectivity and a const, and a consistency? So from level to level, as well as across a single level? So at third grade, are all third graders accessing the same content? Or are some third graders learning second-grade content while others are doing fourth and fifth-grade content? Not that we wouldn't expect variation, but if it's because of, if we're seeing trends, say, you know, low SES schools having the worst performance, and also we're seeing the lowest rigor in some of those buildings, then that would be a concern for us. And that would become an equity issue. And we look at equity of the curriculum and course access. We look to see the kids have equal access, but we look for equity in terms of resource allocation. So we may need more resources diverted to areas of greater need. And then, professional development. So with standard three, because we're looking at connections and alignment, as well as connections between the written, taught, and tested, here is where we look at professional development and training. So is there training in curriculum delivery to make sure that teachers are given support in how to teach the curriculum and how to implement it? Then we also look at monitoring of the curriculum and curriculum implementation. This is really huge. We, we kind of throw it in there, it's just a couple of bullet points, but it's really a huge responsibility, because this falls entirely on school buildings. This, this whole curriculum implementation and the monitoring piece. And yet, that is the most critical function, that you have the curriculum, you're working at the central office to define it and to provide those supports. Are they being used? Are they being implemented? And are principals monitoring it? Are principals trained to monitor it? So we look at all of those things, because that's such an important piece.
On that training piece back there, you evaluate whether we have specific training programs to support the curriculum?
What we do is, with, with staff development, because staff development can be just enormous. It can also be the one that's like nailing Jell-O to the wall, because there's so, sometimes there's so much of it going on, nobody has any idea if it's any good.
Correct.
So that's our challenge. What we try and do is, we get, we try and determine, okay, what is happening in professional development? Who's over it? Who's directing it? Who's monitoring it? Who's collecting? Is anybody tracking it? Is anybody tracking who's doing what? Who's getting which training? So those are all the kinds of questions that we ask about it. We see what kind of financial support there is for it. Then we look at perhaps quality of it. But more importantly, we see, are you doing anything to see if the trainings are making a difference? And when we say make a difference, we say, are you somehow linking it to student performance or student achievement? Are you, are you looking, are principals looking for or monitoring to see if training programs or that content is showing up in classroom practices? Is it changing classroom practices? Are they seeing that in classrooms? And then are they seeing, are they tracking to see if it's impacting student achievement?
Yeah, I guess what, what I'm looking for is, are you making a comment on whether we're aligning training with need, so that the...
Yes, we look at that, too.
Teachers that need specific training on this particular...
Right, so is it differentiated?
Part, are they getting that training consistently? Or they're just, they really need help in this, but they're getting help. I mean, they're getting training in something really different.
Well, and those are the kinds of questions that we ask. And I'll tell you, we hear that from teachers all the time and from principals. Well, I, I say, my, my, I know I have this teacher that they need this, but a decision is made over here by this department that they're going to get this.
Correct.
And, you know, maybe a principal's complaining, "I don't have any control. I have these teachers, they need help in this. And unless I bring somebody in and do it myself, they're not going to get it."
Because can't, can't the teachers, don't the teachers choose what professional development they do?
They do, and, but some of it is required. So there's, it's a balance. And so required based on curriculum delivery and curriculum expectations and instruction is required for, say, all fourth-grade writing teachers.
But we don't drill down to the individual teacher and saying, "We've noticed that you probably could use some assistance in improving this part of your, your professional development, and so you need to take this training."
We do in the, in our Star Focus campuses, as an example.
Only in the Star Focus campuses?
And, and based on requests and needs from the principals. But in terms of intensely doing it, differentiated would be more in the Star Focus campuses.
So you'll give us a, an idea of how effective we are at doing that overall?
Right, because the first thing I'm going to be asking is, do you have any kind of database where you're tracking who, which teachers have had which trainings? And where, you know, what buildings they're at, and, and all those kinds of things. Because that's the first way to, to see who needs what. And then are you linking it to appraisal instrument? And are you linking it to principal input? And so we're just looking to see, what, what do you have that's there in the system? Because sometimes you have capacity, but it's not necessarily occurring at maximum efficacy. So that's, that's the kind of stuff that we look for.
Yeah, because we could have great programs, great training programs, but the wrong people are taking the wrong training, and so...
Right, exactly. And I, and I see that, we see, well, we've seen just about everything. So everything, every possible circumstance you could come up with, we've probably seen it. But yes, we, we sometimes hear it's great quality, but maybe not targeted on need. So, all right, good questions. And then standard four is the, again, the assessment standard. We look at all the tools that are in place, all the assessments that you're using, the instruments that you have. So we look at the scope of assessment. And then we look to see, where do you have any gaps in the information that you're, that you're getting? And the data that's yielded from these instruments? Do you have enough formative diagnostic information for, for teachers? Do you have enough to make system-level decisions? So all of those things, we address under assessment. We also look at program evaluation. We have pretty specific criteria on evaluating programs. Basically, any program that you're adopting, we want to know, what are the goals for the program? Have you established goals ahead of time? How are you measuring progress against attaining those goals? What kind of timeline do you put in place? Do you, do you have evidence of ever terminating, modifying, revising, or initiating a program based on data? And all of this is linked very strongly with finances, because programs cost money. And so that's a major reason why we do it. But also because we've been in systems where the programs were so prolific that they completely derailed the curriculum. The actual intended curriculum was completely secondary. The programs were everything, and, and a lot of them were grant-funded. And so it was all about collecting data for the grant, satisfying the requirements of the grant, because we don't want to lose these millions and millions of dollars, so we have these programs. So all of those things, programs, over the last, oh, I'd say, ten years, it's become more and more of a focus for us. And so we will survey principals to find out what are the programs they have on their campus, just to get a sense of, you know, if we eliminate duplicates, just how many programs are we even talking about? Just to get a feel for that. And sometimes, sometimes systems have real tight controls over that. And other times, I've been in systems where there were so many programs. I mean, it was, it literally was over a hundred pages in the back of the report, just the list. And we'd eliminated all duplicates.
Well, you're, you're making maceulins of myself giddy over here with that. And I'm, I'm sure we're not the only ones.
I think the concept is like...
I think the concept is like, programs are like the government. Once you start something, it never goes away.
Correct, I mean, that's the concern.
That's right.
You say there's, you evaluate whether they're periodically assessed. So are you assessing them during this, or you're not assessing?
What we do is, we assess your system for evaluating programs. That's what we do.
Not the programs themselves.
Not the programs themselves, although, we do give you criteria. How do you evaluate programs? I mean, we tell you, these are the criteria that you need to be doing or adhering to in evaluating programs. And so, we look to see, are you doing any of that? Do you have any of these controls in place? Do you have them in policy? And then, do you have any systems in place? Even if you don't have it in policy, is anybody actually collecting data on programs? And if you are, who's looking at it?
I would prefer for that to be something that is outsourced, not have our own people evaluating programs. Is that something that you guys are able to do? Or we would have to find someone else to do that?
No, we can evaluate the effectiveness of programs. We would tell you exactly how we would do it. We have, that's something that, we have individuals that have done it for years.
I'm looking for relevancy, effectiveness, and utilization of the programs that we have. Because like Mr. Barron said, there may be programs out there that we've never even heard of, that they've been around for a long time, and they're just
Well, it also depends on how much autonomy building principals have had in adopting or choosing or purchasing programs. And so, if there are no controls in place, because, again, that's something that we would say, well, they could adopt programs that could be loosely held with the caveat that they have to be aligned. You have to demonstrate that they align to your curriculum and that they align to what your intended goals are for your students. And likewise, you should have requirements that they can demonstrate effectiveness, that they're having the desired effect, that the money is actually useful. It's money well spent. That's a big, big issue. Because none of us are dealing with increasing resources.
I have a question. We're talking about programs overall. Do you look at our assessments regarding, you know, the curriculum assessments, benchmark tests, those kind of things at the
That's the assessments for the educational programs. Yes, the core educational programs, including even beyond the core content areas. We'll look and see what assessments you have for other content areas as well.
And in doing that, do you look at, I would assume, obviously, the effectiveness overall? Do you look at the
Trends, like
Quantity versus quality outcomes, that type of thing?
In terms of the student performance on assessments? Or in terms of the instruments themselves?
The assessments themselves. Are we doing too many, too few to hit the mark in the outcome target that we're desiring, that type of thing?
We will, if we're, it kind of depends on what we hear and what we see when we're here. For example, we were in a system once where they said, at elementary, they were actually testing 120 out of the 180 days. So, that was a big what? And they said, no. And they actually showed us the calendar, and they could prove that they had scheduled testing at the elementary, 120 out of 180 days. So that was a big whoa. So then, we obviously dug further into that issue and started looking at the instruments. How were, you know, what were the tests that they were administering? What did those look like? I mean, if they were all authentic, performance-based, that would be the kind of stuff that you'd want kids to be doing anyway, then that's one thing. But if it's like a testing event, like a star or a benchmark, that's different. That's not, you know, that's not a learning activity as well. So, yeah, then we would address some of those things. What we typically do when we see district-developed assessments is we'll take a sampling of the assessments themselves, and we'll look at alignment and quality. So, in other words, we'll look to see, all right, does this assessment, does it at least meet and exceed the rigor of the highest-stakes assessment? Because you don't want to be holding kids to a standard that falls short of your highest-stakes assessment. Everything you do in the classroom, you want to meet or exceed what the highest-stakes assessment demands. You have to meet and exceed it in the classroom, or you're just setting the bar too low.
Well, and with our strategic plan, that those are
Set that bar
Yeah, that those are our mid-to-low level expectations as a board.
Now, having said that, because those assessments are another form of written, I mean, that's that part of the design, curriculum design. You've designed assessments to measure progress in mastering the curriculum. We would look at those assessments to see, okay, do the assessments reflect wanting to be globally competitive and rigorous?
You would assess
Yes, we would look at that, yeah. Now, we wouldn't necessarily do every single one, but we would take a sample and reflect back to you and say, okay, have these items, you know, here's the content, the context, the cognitive type that we observed in these assessments. I think that's very valuable information for you. Because again, I give the same example. If every single assessment were only multiple choice, I would say, well, you know what? That's undershooting the mark. That's not what kids need to be successful. Maybe that reflects what's on the star, but that's certainly not what an SAT or an ACT exam looks like. I mean, it's only half, you know, they have multiple choice, but then they also have a big writing component. So, that's part of it. Okay, and then standard five is productivity. This standard has to do a lot with finance, interventions, facilities. It's the standard where we say, you should be able to do more with the same resources or less. Because we are in an era of diminishing resources. We know that. So, we look at financial costs, how resources are being diverted. We look at fiscal responsibility, those kinds of things. And then, how is the district making choices to improve what interventions or what things have been put into place to try and improve things over time? So that you can see improvement with diminished cost or diminished resources. So this is the standard where, like I said, we look at budget, we look at facilities, we look at interventions. We sometimes also look at, because this can be an improvement issue, we look at teacher appraisal systems, sometimes under standard five. In systems where we hear repeatedly from everybody, I can't get rid of any teacher. If I'm lucky, they transfer out of my building. You know, that's if I'm lucky. And so then we say, well, you know, what about the teacher appraisal process or evaluation process? Is that effective? Say, well, the instrument's no good. So we'll look at the instrument. What is the quality of the instrument? Maybe it's, the quality of the instrument's really okay, it's how it's being used. And so, we look at that. We talk to principals about the quality of the workforce. One thing that we usually ask every principal at every building is, what percentage or how many of your teachers would you consider marginal? I mean, really ineffective. And they'll give us, you know, a number. And so then we tally up a percentage, district-wide, that would be considered marginal based on what principals report to us. Then we take maybe a random sample of 100 teacher evaluation instruments with all the names blacked out. And we see, well, what percentage of those are really marginal? And see, does it match? Right, and it rarely does.
We can save you the time.
But it's interesting to see that it's the principals filling out the evaluations, and it's the ones reporting to us which one of their teachers are marginal, you know, what percentage. And so, that's kind of an interesting disconnect many times.
Well, I'm just making a comment. I don't believe that our evaluation tool is very effective. But what may be better use of the time is looking at maybe an evaluation tool that we're considering or something from from Studer or something like that, and how effective
If you have one that you've identified that is, that you really like, I mean, that you know you've probably narrowed it down to one or two, it'd be good for us to have that, because then we could give feedback.
Yeah, I think that's better use of the time because we know we're going away from what we're using now. And we have some ideas about what we want to go with.
And incidentally, there's a lot of movement nationally in teacher evaluation and appraisal instruments. I mean, there are a lot of states that now are saying student progress is going to be up to 50% of a teacher's evaluation. Student progress and student gains on assessments, which is just, I mean, that's revolutionary.
Well, we want to be the leaders in that movement. So we'll get on that.
That's interesting, isn't it? So, those are our findings. So the five standards, we present the findings by standard. Then we give you our recommendations. Now, the recommendations are all together, not by standard because one recommendation may address several findings. We try to limit our recommendations to anywhere from between six to 12, depending on the size of the system. We don't want to overwhelm, so really small systems, we try to limit it because we don't want to overwhelm people. And our recommendations are in our best experience, knowledge, our best opinion. What does the system need to do to get better in all these different areas? And so, we typically group them by tasks. So for example, if we have a specific recommendation on the organizational structure that also relates to job descriptions, and it may also relate to the evaluation system. So we may put all of that in one recommendation. Likewise, when we have findings on maybe staff development and on the quality of the written curriculum, we'll put that all together in a curriculum design and delivery recommendation because it all relates. It's all very, very much tied together. So, sample recommendations, what are changes that we suggest you need to make to the written curriculum? What are changes to the taught curriculum? So if we don't find an instructional model, we would say, you know, you probably need one, get one. We might recommend one or suggest one. We never mandate anything because we feel that that's really not our place to tell you what it has to be. We would say things that you need to consider in making the decision of what you want for an instructional model. And then, I would add to this, what changes to your assessment program? What do you need to put in place for assessments? Where do you need more instruments? Where are you data poor? Which people find that hard to believe, that anybody's data poor with how data-rich we are. And yet, a lot of systems are very poor in informative data. Right, it's not at the right level. And then, what changes in resources and materials? What processes could be improved? What are goals or expectations that maybe are not clearly defined in policies? Where are policies weak? So all of these things are things that fall under recommendations. And I know that you all have in-house some sample reports of what we have for recommendations. And again, these are, I was sharing today that I've participated in probably about 30 audits. And I've written a ton of findings, but I still agonize over every single recommendation that I write. That is, I would far rather write 10 findings over one recommendation.
Ms. Holly, right?
Yes.
Ms. Holly, what did you say about policy a minute ago?
That we also evaluate policies. And we look to see, it's more about whether or not there are policies that address specific issues that pertain to curriculum management. So like your point about professional development being differentiated, is there anything in policy about that? That kind of thing.
Only policies as they apply to the curriculum, right? Not overall policies?
Right. So we do a policy analysis. It's more like a gap analysis. So we say, okay, you have policies that relate to assessment, but they're weak in this, this, and this. Or you don't have any policies that relate to assessment. Or you don't have any policies that relate to, you know, program-driven budgeting or something like that. I mean, we never know what we're going to find till we're there. A lot of Texas districts are very similar because many of them just take policies from TASB. Right, so we pay real close attention to those local policies because that's where, you know, you have specific criteria that are unique to your system. And so, that's where we can see some really interesting things. But we find lots of stuff in policies. You know, even when they're 30 years old, they're still on the books. They're still valid. And maybe nobody knows what they are. But we're reading them, just so you know. Any questions about this?
Sure. How big a team can we expect, should we decide to hire you?
For the team, I think I had recommended it would be between 10 and 12 individuals. And if you wanted some, now, you have some really big schools. You have, I think, what I would consider larger-than-average elementary schools. And we based the size of the team on the sheer number of schools, assuming we could get into at least four buildings a day. So, having said that, if you wanted us to spend a little more time in classrooms collecting data, then we probably could collect data in every other classroom. I feel confident that we could do that. The question is, is that enough for you? Which typically, I mean, statistically, that's probably enough of a sample. It's based on your preference and what you want. Some of those additional analyses, I had been asked about doing some really in-depth work with, say, math curriculum documents. With that, we would actually look at what are the most, what are the math resources and materials, the textbooks and the series that you're using the most? Looking at the rigor of those, the alignment of those. Looking at alignment between, and looking at those artifacts that we would collect. And we would really intensely collect artifacts from math classes if that were, you know, a real focus of our attention on alignment. So these are all things that we could add. They would be additional to the contract as we proposed it, but that's totally up to you. We do a real comprehensive job with the team that we have. And like I said, the only concern that I have is with the number of schools that you have because some of your elementary schools are as large as, you know, middle schools in other states or in other places, that it's just a little more difficult to collect data in every classroom. And what I'm hearing from you and from people in the system is that there's a real level of concern, or at least a real curiosity about what is going on in the classrooms and getting a really strong picture of what that looks like. So, and we would make every effort to get into every single classroom. We would not be able to collect data in every single classroom.
What's the timeline for this? How long will this take?
We usually schedule site visits anywhere from one to three months after signing a contract. And then, once we do the site visit, we work our tails off, literally, to get a draft report back in your hands, typically within 11 weeks. That's our absolute drop-dead wait. That's our drop-dead date. Yes, and we kill ourselves doing it, just so you know. Especially when it's a large system. At least getting a draft into your hands. We give tentative findings the last day of the site visit, verbally. We don't like to do that in writing because they can change. We go home and we do, I mean, I, we do a lot of data analyses just to make sure, double-check, you know, we check all those artifacts that we've collected. We do all those screens, and so that takes some time. And we have to verify all of our findings with the data that we've collected onsite. We do a lot of data before we ever get onsite. We look at curriculum, we look at your strategic plan, we look at planning documents, building improvement plans. We look at all those as much as we can before we even get here. And in interviews, you'd probably be surprised on the very first day, we'd be asking, well, I saw this in this plan, and what does this mean? We start asking questions right away, so.
So you're saying, from the time that we sign a contract?
It's usually one to three months for the site visit.
Before you get out here, or the time?
So we set a site visit, it takes a week, so we need five days when you all feel it's a good time for us to be here.
Okay, so you'll be here in the district for five days?
Five days.
Okay.
So, from the signing of the contract, we schedule that site visit one to three months out. It's also a time for you all to get things together for us because it's a pretty big data collection exercise for you. And send things ahead of time to us. Now, if anything that's online, we get electronic access. And that's so beautiful because then we can just get online and start looking at documents right away. But then, from the conclusion of the site visit, we work to get draft reports in your hands within the three-month period. We try to do it in 11 weeks so that you all then have a week or two to look over the draft. It's an accuracy check, for one. And it's also a chance to respond or react to things. And I'm always reminding people, you know, just because we said it doesn't mean we got it exactly right. So, you know, if there's an issue or a question, that's your opportunity to call the lead auditor and discuss some of those things. Because, you know, really, if we've made a mistake, we're happy to change it. I am the last one that wants a mistake in an audit report.
Can I ask a question about the scope? You've done lots of these audits. Is the scope that is presented, is it as comprehensive as they come? Or is the scope that we're looking at
For your proposal?
For our proposal.
That's pretty standard, what I put in the proposal, what's in your proposal for your audit. And I think the only thing that I was, that I did with that when I was, and I did actually make this team, I added maybe one or two individuals to the team because there were some specific criteria that you would put in your RFQ that I made sure we attended to in the proposal. But I'd say it's fairly traditional. Now, we have done the work, you know, if you want to be globally competitive, we've done that work where we've screened curriculum against external sources. And we can do some of that. And if you want something really in-depth, we could certainly add that.
Well, there's the globally competitive.
Well, there's the globally competitive, there's also the program evaluation.
Yep.
And then, the discussion about the math curriculum. But all those three pieces are in the existing scope, not in the existing scope.
The piece on the program evaluation, we would not be actually evaluating your programs, per se. We would be evaluating your processes for evaluating programs. So, to the degree to which you're actually evaluating your programs in-house. But we can do program evaluations. I mean, we've actually done that. We actually have a whole training program on how to evaluate programs. So, that's something that would be added. And then, looking at math, we would evaluate your math curriculum. We would do that just along with everything else. But if you wanted, say, every single grade level and all the resources and materials examined and analyzed, that would exceed the scope of what's in the proposal. So, we could add that. But again, some of those things really, it doesn't add a lot of cost to a project because I hire auditors off-site. I have people that love tedious work like that. And they're really good at it.
Technical officers, given our, you know, challenges with the math, with our math scores, do you think that would be appropriate to maybe put a little bit more, maybe even science? I think we've improved quite a bit on science, but, you know, I think we're still a bit behind on science.
Right. I think on math, definitely, that we would put more emphasis on that and broaden the scope on that one. In particular, science, I think, would be equally a possibility, but math?
For sure, math. I don't think there's a doubt.
That was my question about scope, was that we're doing this, let's do it.
Sure.
And let's get it all done and make sure that we're as comprehensive as possible. Ms. Holly enjoys your presentation this evening.
Sure.
When we talked about this curriculum management audit idea during the strategic plan with very limited ones that I had looked over, this is exactly what I'd hoped for for the district.
Oh, great.
So, I'm fully supportive. So, thank you.
Couple more questions. What is the largest district that you guys have done an audit for? Can you tell me?
The largest district? Well, we've done districts that have over two hundred schools.
Over two hundred schools? And so, you've done plenty of districts?
This size or bigger.
Because you said you've done about four hundred? So, of that, what percent is like a big school district like ours? We have sixty-something students.
We've done, we've done actually several this size. I know you're ninth-largest in Texas, but you're not in the nation. So, I mean, we've done nationally, we've done quite a few districts, and recently too, that are about, right about your size.
Mm-hmm.
Or bigger. So, yeah, this is, I mean, you are a good-sized district, but I would say probably, I mean, we also have done little tiny districts, you know, with three hundred, six hundred students. I'd have to look at the complete list. But somebody was naming off all the surrounding districts in this area, Mansfield and Irving and Urban, Irving. And we've done, we've worked in all those districts. I mean, because I know, I have them on our shelves. I know all those reports. And so, we have done quite a lot of work in Texas, but of course, the majority of the systems are small in Texas. Keller, yep, we've done Keller ISD, Grapevine, Colleyville. The only one we haven't done, I think, is Dallas. We've done Houston, done San Antonio, Fort Worth. And then nationally, Philadelphia, Boston, DeKalb County, Georgia.
Good.
So, we've done a lot of really big systems. The biggest team I think we've ever had was, I don't know, twenty-seven, twenty-eight people.
I have a couple more questions for you. How big an impact is this going to be on our staff here before the audit, during, and then afterwards?
It's a very good question. The thing that's going for you is that you are a larger system, so you have a bigger capacity. Because we ask for the same things no matter where we are, whether it's a three-person curriculum staff or a thirty-person staff. The more you have is typically a little more challenging, but the more that's online, the easier it gets. Because it's already in one place for us. And so, we're really good at getting online and just snooping, searching, looking at everything. Board policies, I mean, I usually get online and look at Board, I already was on your website looking at ASD, just in looking at the proposal and completing the proposal with TASSA. So, I know a lot about you already. But we do that. So, the job in preparing, it is work. It's a lot of communicating among buildings. Because the biggest task is putting a schedule together. And that usually falls to a small, you know, either a pair or a single individual who has final say over getting that schedule. But, you know, we want to visit every school. And so, it means, you know, it's a, but the lead auditor and myself work very closely with whoever the liaison is or liaisons are to, we give sample schedules so they know this is what it can look like. We explain, you know, how to structure the timing so that we're not only in elementaries in the morning, or we're not only in elementaries in the afternoon. We break that up, because that's important when we want to see instruction. We look at what's the start time. If your high schools start earliest, then we're going to want to hit high schools in the more, in some mornings. Because we want to hit the ground as early as possible, because that gives us more time to see more schools during that day, but balance that with also trying to get to some elementaries before lunch. So, those are all the things that have to be accomplished. So, there is work in a larger system. It's more interviews to get scheduled. So, that is some work. Oh, I'm sorry. I'll move it with me. Okay. So, doing that schedule is quite a bit of work. I don't think the document gathering is as labor-intensive as that schedule is. And so, part of that schedule is communicating with principals, getting the days scheduled, the times scheduled, and where we're going to be there. And then, also, when people are available, you all, when you're available to come into interviews. But the good thing is that we are used to working sixteen, eighteen-hour days when we do audits. And so, when we're here, our time is yours. And we're very clear, if we need to meet with people in the evening, we meet with them in the evening. And if we need to do it at six in the morning, we do it at six in the morning. So, I've done phone interviews at ten o'clock at night, because that's when a person was available. And that's what we do. So, we're here for the week, we're here for those five days. We don't live during those five days. But that's what the work is. That's the nature of it. And some of us actually enjoy it. But we know there's an end. So, it's only five days. So, there is some work. And then, while we're onsite, the biggest thing with onsite while we're here, those five days, is obviously logistic things, getting us to the different schools and that. But it's responding to if we have requests for information. But we're real careful on how we manage that. We make that go through one person. So, you know, you don't have somebody that's getting fifty requests all day long. We record it in writing, because we do have a lot more requests for, say, reports that we heard about or documents that we hear that we want to see. And so, we make a request for those while we're onsite. And then, after we're gone, you all can take a deep breath. Because there's nothing more to do except clean up and wait for the report to come. That's when our real work begins. So, and I can't answer it very well, because I never know. It just kind of depends on how much you have and how organized it is here. So, but the more that is put together, the more work that's done to sort of collect things together, the, usually the more smoothly it runs while we're here onsite.
We're good? Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for taking the time.
Sure.
This is, we're a very driven governing body and really wanted to take the time to wrap our heads in our...
No, I'm happy to do it.
Around this whole concept and make sure it was covered in everything that we're looking for. Thank you.
Bill Poston, Fenn English have always said that it shows remarkable courage when a board or a superintendent asks for an audit. Because it is, it can be, I don't want to say a blow, but it is a reality check, if you will. But it's also the mark of a system that really does want to do better by its students. Because that's really what we focus on. So, thank you all very, very much.
We're going to take a short break, and then we'll be back to grind through a few Let's go, gang. Next item on the agenda, we're going to move up the EIE local, so I have some tired principals that want to go home. I thought you were here because you love us.
They're here for the curriculum audit.
We're going to do EIE local for the principals?
Yes.
Okay. You're on. Dr. Kavasos.
Thank you, President Byrne. This evening, we're bringing the, a review of policy EIE as it pertains to reclassification of students. And this was actually a discussion item that has been discussed over, I guess, last spring and May and that time period, to look to see whether we should reclassify students as they earn their credits, specifically students who are behind in their classification. So, Mr. Harvey has a presentation and has been working with principals on this.
Yes, we had several committees. We had a committee of counselors who reviewed and made some recommendations that we then took to principals for review and recommendation, and then also took to the DIDC committee. And there's actually three parts to what we're going to look at here. But when we start talking about reclassification, first of all, classification of students is done before the start of each school year. Students are moved on to the next grade level based on having reached a minimum number of credits. So, if they've reached six credits, then they move from freshman to sophomore. Twelve credits, eighteen credits. So, that's regular classification. When we talk about reclassification done at other times, right now, in current policy, there's only one other time that that's done, and it's January for students who are going to graduate early. And at that point, they're juniors in January. If they've declared that they're going to graduate early, we then reclassify them to seniors at that point, and then they'll graduate in May. What we're proposing is that we make a change to that reclassification to also include students who have fallen behind grade level, that they may be reclassified based on the number of credits earned and the number of years in high school. And that that reclassification would take place at any time. So, if those students who are behind grade level, if they earn credits through credit recovery with E2020, if they do a credit by examination, any of the options that they might have, as soon as they reach the number of credits to move to the next level, as long as they don't move ahead of their class, then we would reclassify them at that time. We've looked at the data for the current set of students that we have to see who would potentially be affected. We don't know really what credits they'll have yet, but that potentially would be affected. In ninth grade, we have six hundred and seventy-nine students who are off-level, which means they're repeat ninth graders. They're second or third-year ninth graders. They would be eligible to be moved forward as they earn credits. Tenth grade, we have five hundred and sixty-one who are off-level, so they're tenth graders and really should be one of the other classes. We have three hundred and seventy-five eleventh graders and a hundred and sixty-one twelfth graders, which of course, they wouldn't be reclassified. They're already twelfth graders and just trying to get the credits to graduate. Benefits, the primary benefit is to reward students who are, and give them the motivation to get those credits to be moving towards graduation. Some kind of effects of that are, as they're allowed to move forward, and once they become a junior, for instance, they could take GPA exempt classes. That's one of the incentives that we can give to them. They'd be able to leave campus for lunch when they reach that junior level. They'd be eligible for exam exemptions, and they would be eligible for dual-credit. So, there's, these are benefits that we'd be able to offer to those students by reclassifying them as soon as they have the appropriate number of credits. So, that's the change that we've made there. There's actually two other, which are kind of cleanup changes related to this policy that we're bringing to you at the same time. And really, these are just cleanup. One of them has to do with our kindergarten and first grade. Because of the change to the new report card, some of the wording on what it takes to advance to the next grade level, and it's just the wording has changed to meet state standards, and we needed to work that into the policy. Second grade, we needed to make some changes, because now we offer, we award numeric grades in science and social studies. Before, it was E and S. And so, now, we need to work that into the policy, that they have to make at least a seventy in science and social studies for second grade. And then, the eighth grade, again, is just a cleanup. The policy refers to tax and SDAA and LDAA, and those need to be modified to reflect star. And so, those are just cleanups to the policy, is really the reclassification, which is an addition to the policy.
Mr. Hug.
Thank you, President Byrne. I think this is a good idea. I think it's a good concept. I do have one quick question, because I always hate when we hear those horror stories around April and May from other districts, from students that have maybe moved up in grades, and then it's messing up the valedictorian. And I know this is for kids who have fallen behind, so that's not a play. But how is this going to play in? Have you all talked through class rank, or, you know? That's always an issue. Those are nasty press situations.
It would be, but this only applies to students who are behind level. So, we want to get those students caught up so they're with their class and would be considered as a part of the ranking and all with that class. But it only affects those students who are behind. A student who's on level isn't going to be reclassified ahead of their class. They're going to stay with their class, with that exception of the early graduates.
Except for the third-year, the three-year graduates.
Everyone else, they're not...
And that system for GPA we have is perfectly...
That's right. That's correct. So, it doesn't, it's not going to affect that if we only apply it to students who are behind.
So, then, right when the students get moved back up, they're going to be classified in with that grade, so that's how their class rank...
That's right.
...will help, because then it'll affect the other students.
That's right.
Okay? That's fine.
Couple of really minor things, I guess. If we reclassify students, then we reissue them IDs of the new classification, so they could go to lunch or whatever is appropriate for that grade level?
Yes.
Would that be part of some administrative magic that we're going to do?
Well, the reclassification process, you know, we have to, is a little bit more of a manual process. It's not automatic that that's going to happen. So, as a part of that process, as we are reclassifying those students and we move them to the next level, and it changes the way their ID looks at that part, we would then reissue their IDs.
One thing I remember from this happening many times was that juniors became seniors, only nobody knew about it. And as teachers were approaching the end of the second semester into April, May, June timeframe, teachers are constantly bombarded with, are the seniors going to graduate? Right? And these kids who were eleventh graders at the beginning of the year and are now seniors, and at that time IG Pro, the number didn't get changed. So, they still read out as being eleventh graders. Can we, in teams, fix that so that the teachers know that, yeah, this student really is a senior now?
When that student, their credits is evaluated and the office says, yes, we're going to reclassify this student to a twelfth grader, we go into the system and change them as a twelfth grader, and then that is reflected throughout the system.
Okay. That was a real concern.
It was. With SASE, IG Pro and SASE were separate from one another.
Yeah, I know.
And so, that connection didn't happen. But within teams, they are connected, so when you make the change, it's reflected everywhere.
Okay, good. Those are all my questions. So, anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Harvey.
Thank you.
We'll bring it back as a voting item?
Yes.
Okay, let's go with, we're playing discussion item bingo here. Number B. Legal. Is B legal? Okay. Review of board policy, CEA legal, annual operating budget financial exigency. Exigency. Hey, I can also say specificity. Giddy to Ms. Powell?
Good evening.
Nice to see you.
Thank you.
We're getting giddy here because it's so late.
I feel the same way. President Byrne, board members, Dr. Kavasos, the board's work calendar calls for a discussion on board policies governing a reduction in force process. And so, we are bringing that to you this evening for that reason only, is because it is a policy discussion. There are actually four different board policies that relate to a RIF process for employees There are actually four different board policies that relate to a RIF process for employees that have those educator contracts that are governed by Chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code. And those four board policies are CEA legal, which gives the board the authority to declare financial exigency, and then the DFF policies. There's a DFF local, legal rather, that addresses RIFs in general, and then a DFFA local, which addresses the RIF process in the event that the district declares a financial exigency, and also a DFFB local policy that addresses the process for RIF in the event the district declares a program change. So we're going to touch on all four of these here as we move along. As we all know, though, payroll makes up the lion's share of a budget for a school district. In our case, payroll represents like 88% of our total budget. So if you are looking or needing to make a significant reduction in your total budget, you almost have to go to that payroll category to make a significant reduction. The state legislature has mandated laws or set laws to regulate when and how an educator, again, an individual that has a, a Chapter 21 educator contract, can be eliminated through a formal reduction in force process. And it just, if you look at our workforce, over half of all of our employees are educators and have educator contracts. So there are, a reduction in force may be eliminated one of two ways, either by declaring a financial exigency or a program change. As we all remember, we had to reduce our budget in 2011 due to state funding cuts and our need to eliminate a recurring budget deficit. So in March of 2011, the board declared a financial exigency and a program change to effect a RIF process. We eliminated a total of 631 jobs in that spring. Twenty of those positions were occupied by employees who had these educator contracts. And so they were actually 20 of the 631 that fell under the formal reduction in force process. Majority of the positions that we eliminated, we either eliminated through attrition, or they were positions that were not covered by an educator contract. So we're talking for just a minute about, I'll talk about financial exigency, and Ms. Evans is going to talk about the process of the RIF procedures themselves. A financial exigency means that the district's financial position is such that the district either cannot support its instructional programs, or it cannot fully fund the compensation for its workforce in the current year or the upcoming year. And so, to declare a financial exigency, the board adopts a resolution stating that this financial emergency or financial exigency exists. The rules pertaining to financial exigency have, have changed dramatically since spring of 2011, when we declared financial exigency. The state legislature, in the, the called session, summer of 2011, passed Senate Bill Eight that made some rather significant changes to the financial exigency rules. They directed the education commissioner to set specific criteria under which a district could declare financial exigency. Prior to that time, local boards had discretion to determine when their financial situation was such that they needed to declare a financial exigency, and that is no longer the case. So take a look here for just a minute at the commissioner's rules that set forth the criteria on when a district can declare a financial exigency. You have to meet, you can meet any one or more of these six things, and I'll try to quantify them for you as we move along. The first one is, a district would have to have a decrease of more than 20% of its unassigned fund balance over a two-year period, and that's on a per-student basis. So our fund balance, our unassigned portion of our fund balance would actually have to drop by $26 million in order for the district to qualify to declare a financial exigency under this particular criteria. Also, a decline in enrollment by more than 10% over the past five years. Well, our enrollment has increased each of the last five years. And the way TEA would look at that, they'd look at your enrollment today, they'd look at your enrollment five years ago, and look to see what that, that total percentage change is. So for us, if we were needing to, to look at this even in the next year or so, you'd have to look back five years, and, and you would actually have to drop to an enrollment that was 10% less than what you had five years ago. And so we'd have to drop that 10%, plus lose all the growth that we've actually recognized since that, that year, five years ago. So in our case, we'd be needing to lose over 8,200 kids for us to have 10% fewer kids than we had five years ago. In, in my years with the school district, I only am familiar with about a two-year period where our enrollment dropped, and it was after we had the influx of kids from Louisiana following Hurricane Katrina. For about two years after that, we'd lost a total of about 500 students, a little over 500. And so to think that we would lose 8,200 students is, is not very likely.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
I, I wanted to ask a question on that, 20%. You said that approximate dollar amount, I think?
On the unassigned portion of our fund balance, we would have to lose about $26 million.
Yeah, $26 million.
Because, right, our fund balance, our unassigned portion of our fund balance is at the end of this past fiscal year is $131 million.
Right, right. And that would not necessarily be, and I'm not suggesting that we would ever do this, if we as a board decided we need to spend $26 million on something, does that qualify us if we needed to?
That would qualify under this criteria.
It would.
Yes.
So that is, I'm not saying that we would, I was just curious. Okay.
Yeah. The, the third criteria is that we would have a reduction of more than 10% in total general fund, funding per student and weighted ADA over one year. And for us, in this particular case, we would need to, to lose $40 million for that to qualify for a financial exigency under that criteria. The fourth one is that we incur a natural disaster or casualty such as a fire that causes us to have to spend fund balance to make repairs or to reconstruct facilities, and those costs would have to exceed 15% of our current general fund budget. So for us, that would be $65 million. And number five, any, you could have any one or a combination of the following that, again, exceeds 15% of your total general operating budget, either an unanticipated major expense, which including major repair costs, litigation expenses other than lawsuits against the state, or significant tax refunds. And so, again, 15% of our budget would be $65 million. And the last item they have is somewhat of a catch-all. It's any other circumstances approved in writing by the Commissioner of Education. I actually called the Audit Division at TEA today, and I talked with the lady who processes these, and I asked her, I said, have you seen anything that has fallen under any of these? And they haven't processed any since these rules went into effect. And she couldn't even give me an example of what might fall under number six. All right. So as you can see, it's, it's, it's pretty unlikely that circumstances are going to change in the next few years that would permit the school district or cause the school district to need to declare, or qualify to declare a financial exigency under these rules. We also, as I mentioned, we have DFF policies that address the process itself. This DFFA actually addresses the process for a RIF in the event the district does declare a financial exigency, and Mrs. Evans is going to touch on, on those procedures.
Ms. Powell, very quickly.
Sure.
You mentioned that you could do a RIF through financial exigency or, or through program change.
Or a program change.
And so are you going to address the program change?
She's going to address the program change.
Thanks.
Good evening, President Barron, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos. The other manner in which we can declare a reduction in force is through a program change. And a program change is an elimination or a curtailment or reorganization of curriculum offerings, program or school operations, such as a change in curricular objectives, a modification or reorganization of staffing patterns on a particular campus or district-wide, a lack of student response to particular course offerings, legislative revisions to programs, a reorganization or consolidation of two or more campuses, or a modification or reorganization of a program. You must note that a school district is always free to change its organizational structure as it seeks to increase its efficiency. After declaring a need for a RIF by program change, the superintendent may make recommendations to the Board of Trustees regarding employment areas to be affected. The employment areas may include elementary or secondary grades, levels, subjects, departments, or programs, special programs such as gifted and talented, bilingual EASL, special education or compensatory education, disciplinary alternative education programs, counseling programs, library programs, or other disparate programs, or even in an individual campus. And in determining the affected areas, the Board of Trustees may combine or coordinate areas to make this possible. The board's choice of affected areas is significant because once the employment process is defined, the employment area is defined, all employees in that area must be considered regardless of their, regardless of where they are within the district. So we must take all the employees in that, that particular area. The criteria for decision-making is the step, this third step in the RIF process. The superintendent applies the RIF criteria in the order of importance specified in policy. And the policy currently reads qualifications, which is certification of a current assignment, seniority, which is the length of time in the district rather than in particular, rather than in a particular assignment, and this is measured by the employee's recent date of hire, performance as reflected by the most recent formal appraisal, whether it be in the district or a previous district, and any other written evaluation information, including disciplinary information from the last 36 months. Also, you can, the next step, the next criteria would be extra duty, such as department or grade level chair, band director, coach, or activity sponsor, and lastly, the professional background. That would be, if necessary, the superintendent may compare employee's professional education and work experience related to their current assignment. Applying the criteria in this specific order is critical to, to the fidelity of the RIF process. The, the criteria cannot be taken out of order as specified in board policy. So again, that order is qualifications, seniority, performance, extra duties, and professional background as it is currently written. This was the area that the Board of Trustees was particularly concerned about in our last RIF process. Local policy is the architect for our process in determining the RIF process, and this means confirming any update to the local policy would be the first step in going forward with a new RIF. At this time, we can answer any questions that you may have.
Trustees with questions? So I think what's going to happen, Mrs. Pena.
I just want to make sure I express what I expressed.
Go ahead.
In, in reading this, and then, Dr. Cavassos, if you would provide the explanation or the dilemma that my concern is. My concern is, is that when we wrote this originally, it was because we knew that the performance appraisal system was not done according to how we could measure the performance of employees. And so we put seniority ahead of performance measures. I agree that performance measures may be important, but if they're not measured across the board the same way, then we have a problem with that. And I was hoping that PDS would correct that. And then, once we got that, we would have some system of measuring true performance. But now we have, I said that in, in working, trying to work out my concerns, and, Dr. Cavassos, you had an explanation that even made it more disconcerting to me.
Well, with PDS, we know that in 2014, 2015, we're going to, the state will introduce a new appraisal instrument, and that's part of what is being designed now. And also, our current history with PDS, still, our policy is every three years that an employee gets evaluated. So it still would be a mixture of appraisals in some cases. Knowing what's coming in the transition to a, a new appraisal instrument that I think from indication, it would have more distinction in terms of, of levels of performance. And so, those are things to consider as, as you move forward.
And, and why do we do appraisals only every three years?
That's part of board policy, and, and that's part of an adopted policy that, at some point, we can certainly have more discussion about, but that's our current policy. And districts vary across the state in terms of their evaluation cycles. I think as we move forward with transitioning to the new state model, that's part of the discussion that will be, be part of, of our recommendation.
Well, I, I think that may be one of our policies we need to review, because a, three years is far too long.
Would you like to clarify what happens to new teachers?
New teachers are appraised as they're coming to the system that year. Is that right, Mr. Jones? Every year? Somebody? Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. President Barron, may it please the board. New teachers new to the profession, new to the district are appraised every year annually for three years formally. Only after a successful completion of that formal cycle do they then enter the current district policy, become eligible for what's called as the Alternative Annual Review, the AAR. They're eligible for that for up to two years. Now, under current district policy, a principal or a teacher who's under the AAR, that Alternative Annual Review process, can request to be put back on a formal appraisal at any time. This seldom happens.
Yeah.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Yes.
So I, I think what you're saying is that if a teacher is successfully evaluated three years in a row, then that principal is buying off on the fact that now that teacher can go into a cycle of more, less frequent evaluations. With the, the new Texas model that's coming in in 2014, 15, if it's the TAP model, which it very well may be, then that's a minimum of two evaluations every year for every teacher. So we'll go away from the once every three years to twice every year, and that's much more reasonable with what Mrs. Pena is looking at. And it allows us to, at that time, put performance where it ought to be on this list. But from now until maybe 2015, I think we're stuck with the way it is now, seniority and then performance, because there's no reliability in the senior, the performance system just yet.
And that was my concern, and I agree with that.
I know it is, yes.
Because I, I mean, I don't know how this happened. I'm baffled.
Baffled?
Baffled. Or befuddled, as my daughter would say.
Mr. Palmer, your light's flashing.
I think it's already been addressed. I was going to ask what the implication would be if I were to suggest to move seniority down below performance, and so...
I think at this point, you'd have a mixture of evaluations. You'd have an evaluation system, as Mr. Jones has described earlier, even in the past presentation, about our pilots that, that really have no real big distinctions in performance.
In essence, our current evaluation system really is ineffective.
And that's why the state is transitioning PDS out.
Okay. Just, I'd love to kind of make that point, that we really don't have a very good evaluation system, and obviously, we're focused on, on working to improve that.
He's back. Thank you for your indulgence, sir. And if I may, we still have teachers who, then when you look at their last formal appraisal, they've not yet been appraised under PDS yet. As it's our third year of the implementation cycle, teachers who were last formally appraised in the last year of TITAS, then entered their first year of the Alternative Annual Review. Last year was the second year of the Alternative Annual Review. This year, for the first time, three years after implementation, they'll be faced with their first formal appraisal under PDS. So if we were to move that up, we still would have a very wide blend of where people are in their last formal appraisal.
And, and I'm okay with leaving it alone, because I don't expect that we'll be calling for a RIF anytime soon, so that's fine.
Not after Mrs. Powell gave us the good news about how much money we'd have to lose before we could ever go to a RIF.
I did want to bring up that although we won't be doing a RIF, the, the requirements are, for program change, the exact same criteria. So it might be, I, I don't foresee that happening, but who knows?
Well, if, if we want the curriculum folks to do the program screening.
Right.
Then that could come up.
Right. And so, to that, I would just comment that there are a lot of districts that are going to be going through a similar type of thing, as far as transitioning off PDS, going into something something else with a mixed bag of tricks. So it might not be as unwarranted to, to consider it. But if we can hold it off until we get all our ducks in a row, I think that's better.
Thank you all. Next item is the charge to the Calendar Committee for school year thirteen, fourteen. Dr. Cavazos.
Thank you, President Barron. This item is, is to start the discussion of the task and the charge for the Calendar Committee. In the past, there has not been a specific charge to the Calendar Committee, and, and I think we've gone on just assumptions at some point, or, or things that were preferences from the Board before. And so this is an opportunity to, before the committee actually starts their work, to give us some direction and perhaps a charge, if that's something you're interested in doing. Mr. Walker has a presentation about the calendar.
Mr. Walker, could I hold you off for just a minute?
Sure.
Thank you. Before we started tonight, somebody presented to me a thought, and I thought I'd present it to all of you, that perhaps that the Board should not be in the calendar business, and that the administration should write the calendar. So before you do your presentation, could I get some feelings from the Board on that, and then we'll go with this presentation? If anybody wants to say anything about that, otherwise we'll push on here. Oh, wait a minute.
There's the board policy. It says I can get to you. 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 So we would have to change the board policy if we were gonna do that.
But if nobody feels that way, then we'll just push on like this.
Can I ask one question?
Mr. Hibbs.
As far, as far as the committee, we, we like committees. We like committees with, with our district. How did the, how did the Calendar Committee come out? Do we know? I mean, has it always been, or is it just the Board just said one time that we're gonna create a committee for it?
It's been consistent for a good amount of time.
Yeah, for a long time. It's very long time now.
Okay, because I, I say that because each year, the committee comes back with recommendations. Then each year, we come up with, with people that are saying, well, what about this? Why don't we add this one in, or this one in? And, you know, if we're, if the Board's not interested in doing this, then maybe we should have our hand in, you know, and just go ahead and planning it out, or we do as what President Barron suggested of just letting the, the district handle this.
I see it. The committee thing is like a government program. It's kind of always been there, but we don't have to.
Well, the reason it became this way was because citizens had concerns about how the calendars were set up. And there was one time, well, Mike Patterson was on the Board, and I wasn't on the Board, but I came to all the meetings, and his concern, because he had gotten calls from constituents, was the length of some of the time the students were off because of parents that were single parents who had dual custody of a child. So he brought up an issue, and that was changed. Another time, a trustee got a call because of the, the way it fell on somebody's religious holiday. Tony was concerned when we had an open house and something was going on with our calendar. So, I mean, everybody, the public has a say, and they'll make the say. So when the committee presents what they believe is academically acceptable, then we get feedback from the public, we, the trustees. That's how the trustees got involved, I believe. I remember it specifically when Mike Patterson was concerned about the dual custody issue.
And, Ms. Hibbs, there's, there's been times that committee, because it, it consists of parents, staff, from...
Students.
Students. And so it's got all those, and a lot of what they come back and give the findings back is having to meet the exact number of days, instruction days, the start date, when they determine, you know, what are we looking at of, you know, if they're trying to fit in, like last year, one of the big examples we had was trying to do a day off, you know, certain days, and deciding on winter break. So I think they do have that discussion with a good cross-section of the community to kind of have some input as to what comes back, and then it comes to us and we look at.
Okay. Well, I say that. I was, I was just wondering, I, I don't have a problem with us having a committee for it. My daughter served on this committee two years ago. They met, and then the, the committee somehow grew, and some of the members weren't invited back. So, as a result, the, the committee process, to me, I just think was flawed, and it may have just been an issue in that case. I don't have a problem with us doing this. I was just really asking the question, you know, President Barron may have something here, is, is this something that the Board actually needs a hand in, or is this something that the administration should be doing? Is this something? Because I agree with you, we've gotta hit the target days. You know, go about hitting the target days.
Okay. Mrs. Hollins.
Thank you, President Barron. I was thinking about this earlier today when I was going through the sport packet, and thinking, exactly why do we do this? Not that community input is not important, because it is. Without, without a doubt, the, the school calendar should be based on instructional sound, instructional sound delivery of our curriculum, student need, parent need, faculty need, the capacity of the district, and so forth. What, what I mentioned earlier today was that we, as a governing Board, would, could also look at doing this through a governance policy, that these are the, this is the will of the Board, that we would like things such as, you've included balanced semesters and the different components, so that then, the superintendent would then go forth, and of course, still include the community and the parents and so forth, and go through the same process. My question was, is this required for the Board to vote on? Or is it not required for the Board to vote on just the, the end of the day? Because there, there's mandates, and there's policies that say, I think, I'd have to ask Ms. Castillo, I think it's EB local and EB legal that already say you have to have a hundred and eighty days, and has all the commissioners' directions on what the requirements are for the school year. And we also have an EB local that says, that's, you know, we might ought to look at as an update. As far as this year, you know, I think we need to, I assume the administration needs some direction on what we're looking for in the calendar, but as part of the ongoing process, I would just suggest that we look at that and see the thoughts of if this is something that really requires a Board vote, or could be managed through board policy.
So on the list, let's bring back that policy to look at at a later date. And for right now, we'll continue with Mr. Hogg's comment.
Well, we can go on if you're, I mean...
Go ahead.
Just a quick comment. I, I think it's a novel idea, Ms. Solins, but I think the calendar is something that affects a whole lot of people. And the way the Board votes on things, it's a very easy portal for citizens to reach out to us and let us know what, how that calendar affects them, and what it does. And, and if we're not voting on that, and we're just allowing staff, I think some of that public input is taken away from them. And, and this is not something just affects people that live here, it affects businesses that are around here, vacations. I, I think it's something, as the elected officials of the district, and, and there's a discussion of whether it's a governance piece or not, and I agree with that, that's fine, but I think it's something that we, as trustees, for the large input, just for community input, is something we have to vote on, and I would support voting for it still.
Mr. Powell.
Well, Mr. Hogg saved us all that time, because I was gonna say exactly the same thing. I, I don't, I wouldn't say I support us voting on it yet, because frankly, I'm for us voting on less stuff than the administration can handle. However, this is impactful enough to the individuals in our community, businesses in our community, but I think it's, 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 there's value in having this discussion a little bit more. I mean, tonight's not the night for the discussion, but I think we should discuss it. So I'm okay with it, but I think it has a huge impact, and I, you know, pretty much agree with, with Mr. Hogg was saying. So, thanks.
Mr. Walker, you're on.
President Barron, members of the Board, Dr. Cavazos. Tonight, I'm gonna bring you a charge, a presentation for developing a charge for the 2013, 2014 Calendar Committee. And first of all, we have to look at the law, what it states, and which doesn't leave us a lot of flexibility in when we start building the calendar, but it states that you must have at least a hundred and eighty days of instructions. However, it will allow you to take three of those instructional days and use them for staff development purposes. And the AID has grant, been granted a waiver for those three days, and this has been ongoing for us, for our staff development. It also states that a teacher's contract must be for a minimum of a hundred and eighty-seven days, and that is what we, our contracts for our teachers are, a hundred and eighty-seven days. We cannot start school prior to the fourth Monday in August, and the calendar must include two makeup days, and it must have a waiver for early release days, and we have a maximum of six days that we apply for waiver for. And here are some things that previous Boards used for calendar preferences. Teacher preparation day prior to the start of each semester, one holiday per month, balanced semesters, balanced six weeks periods, and in-school year close to June the first. And here's some additional recommendations from the Calendar Committee that we have also implemented into our calendars over the years. And of course, we've already talked about the first two. The other one is exchange time. This is what teachers will go off contract hours and accumulate twelve staff development points. There's accumulate twelve hours of staff development, and in turn, they will get two days of exchange time that we would designate in the calendar for those days. Balanced six weeks within each semester, and because we've gone to ending the semester prior to winter break, we have unbalanced semesters. First semester has less days than the second semester, so, but we still have balanced six weeks within each one of those semesters. Each, each, in each semester, or in each six week, at the end of the week, and the teachers like that, you know, for grading periods, you know, the grade test scores, test papers, the average grade, and they do that most of the time over the weekend. And they also like to begin each six week at the beginning of the week. That way, they can start new lesson cycles at the beginning of the week. Apply for waiver for the state of, for, from the state for three staff development days. That's something we've already talked about, as well as apply for waiver from the state for six early release days. And four of those days we use for semester exams, and the other two are for, we use for staff development. This year's calendar, we will only have four days. The committee last year decided to only have the four days for semester exams, but I think in the future, it would be good to put those other two days in for staff development, since we go into our strategic plan, and we implement a lot of new initiatives in our district, it would be good to put those two days back in. And there are some days that, that we've pretty much stayed away from, for using for weather makeup days, Martin Luther King Day, President's Day, Good Friday, or Memorial Day. Those are days that we have typically not used for our weather makeup day. And of course, a couple of years ago, we wanted to end the first semester prior to winter break, and the reason for that is, of course, I heard Ms. Peña talk about, some of the parents on the committee who had custody of, dual custody of kids, they want to equal time with those students. And also, they talked, they talked about, oh, end of first semester. The kids will, you know, during that, during holidays, they think a lot about coming back, taking semester exams, and they didn't, didn't, didn't really enjoy their holidays because of that, thinking about the semester exams in January. And it also gives the teacher the time to enjoy their holiday, then come back and start a new, brand-new semester as well. Have a minimum of two weeks during the winter break, and end the school year close to June first. And that's pretty much it. We are ready for questions.
Hang on, Dr. Rush. I gotta ask one question first. Does anybody know where that one holiday a month came from? Because all of a sudden, it just appeared. Dr. Rush? Dr. Rush? Dr. Rush? Okay. All right, that's good. So we'll get to that later. Dr. Rush?
That was actually the main thing I was gonna ask about. So, like-minded. With that, if that is something that is determined by the committee through appropriate communication with students' parents, and especially faculty, that that is optimum to obtain maximum achievement potential and results, that's what I'm in it for. To me, that's what this whole thing is about. If not, get rid of it. If we stick with one holiday per month, per achievement, in, in my mind, then I think we have May, we have Memorial Day. I've never understood why we have this weird May thing going on. So, Cinco de Mayo, past boards, I'd, I'd say if that's the idea, then keep it consistent. So, that's, otherwise, I think everything else is, is pretty much status quo at this point. As long as we make the decisions based on what is for maximum, optimum outcome of achievement, then let's just keep it the way it is.
Mrs. Peña.
The one day off per month was also something, it was supposed to place the day strategically so that it was during a extreme time where the teachers were having to do either preparation for testing, after-testing, benchmark testing, the students, they get, grow fatigue, and it was to give relief to both the teachers and students for at least one day of the month. That was another reason, but that those days were supposed to be placed as strategically as possible.
Okay. Does anybody have any problems with decreeing that the first semester end before Christmas? Because if you go even, then it doesn't work out that way. All right? Can we all agree on that?
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Didn't this year, we make an exception? Because we don't call it Good Friday, we call it...
Spring holiday.
Spring holiday. Didn't we, because of the timing, there was something that happened where we did not, we, we used the spring holiday as a day on, not a day off. And there was a reason behind that this year. I know, I only think that that's the case because I thought we received an email with a complaint from someone that we had done that.
I remember, I know what you're talking about. What, what the complaint was is that we didn't have the right date down for the spring holiday, but what happened, that person didn't understand that that's a floating holiday. It's not always going to be on the same day. Like, most of the time, it's gonna be in April, but this year, it's gonna be March twenty-ninth. And that's what the confusion was, they thought it's supposed to be a day that's supposed to be a, a day that's always gonna be the same, but it's a floating holiday. And so it's, rather than, like, this year, we won't have a holiday in, in April, it's gonna be March twenty-ninth.
And so there are exceptions because, based on academics. You know, just as we're, we were talking about, we have, there are some days we probably will never touch, which would be Martin Luther King, President's Day, and perhaps Memorial Holiday. But spring holiday, that's a floater.
Mr. Hogg.
Oh, the calendar. What fun, Mr. Walker. Now I know why you're retiring. I, I, I understand, Mr. Walker. This is gonna be your last hurrah, huh, is the calendar?
Well, we've got the boundaries coming up.
Oh, Mr. Walker. Mr. Walker, you may not make it out of retirement. If that's the way we're going. Mr. Walker, I would just have this committee possibly have the discussion. In the last couple of years, looked at tons of other school districts' calendars, and I don't know how I really feel about what I'm about to say, so I'm kind of going, which is always hard, but a lot of other committee, a lot of other districts aren't, they don't name their holidays. It's listed as a holiday. Here's why it's off, boom, whatever's taken off. And that's something your committee may want to have that discussion about. I don't, that's why I say... I don't, that's why I say, when I put that little caveat on the front side. You know, one, I know Ms. Solins pointed out to me last year, I think it was Plano ISD, I think does that. And so, you know, what it did was it just made when they wrote up the calendar much simpler. Not having to list everything on there of where it is. So, it, it was just plain and simple. At school, not at school, boom, that's all the calendar listed. So, just a thought process on that.
If we take the listed calendars off the list for snow day, then that we're pretty much committing you to saying that if we have snow days, they will just be added on at the end of the year. Does that sound like a reasonable statement? I see you got the nod. You got the nod, didn't you?
Yeah.
No, that would not impact graduation at all, would it? In fact.
We would make the adjustment.
Somehow.
Yeah.
Yeah, but graduation dates would stay the same.
Right. It's, it's exam days and all the other things around that.
Then, we're not voting tonight, so, have fun, Mr. Walker. Come back when you got those boundaries figured out, all right?
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Well, we, we got one more. Natural gas fund. Who wants to spend some money? All right, the next item on the agenda is the natural gas fund, and Ms. Powell, you up? Okay. We've, let me, before we go, we've kicked this one around for several board meetings, and it's just kept getting deferred and deferred, and, and we're not making a decision tonight, we're just gonna get a clarification of what's going on, because we're not voting on anything.
President Baron, board members, Dr. Cavassos. The board has asked to have a discussion on the natural gas fund, and so, we bring that for discussion this evening, and I will make several very brief comments to preface the discussion. First of all, the, the board established a special revenue fund in June of 2008 for the natural gas proceeds. And the board has since then formally committed, actually taken action to commit the fund balance of, of the gas fund for special projects to be determined by the board. This was actually a change that was necessitated by a new Gatsby accounting standard that required that you take action to commit balances that exist within special revenue funds in order for them to continue to, to be classified as a special revenue fund. The fund balance of the gas fund as of September 30th is $22.3 million, and the entire balance of the fund is invested in logic, a local government investment pool. To date, there have been no projects identified by the board for expenditure out of the gas funds. This is the budget that was adopted for the natural gas fund for the current year. With that, I will be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Can you briefly tell us what the revenues, where they come from, and what the expenses go to?
Sure. The, go back to that. The revenues come from royalties and from interest income. When we build the budget, we don't presume right now that we will have any additional leases or extensions of leases. This is based on projected, a very conservative estimate of royalties and interest income. The expenditures are for any legal fees associated with leasing or lease activities, and the amount that we pay to Bank of Texas, our consultant.
Questions from the board. Now is the time for us to discuss if we have a long-range plan for this fund.
Do we have to take any action at any time, or what we've already done is all that we need to do for that?
Yes. The board has, has committed that this, these funds will be used for special projects to be determined by the board. So, the only other action you would actually need to make would be to appropriate funds, because at the moment, there, except for the current year revenue, all the funds are in a fund balance, so you would just appropriate those funds for expenditure.
Okay. And could we appropriate, say, just a portion of the funds, or just the interest that is earned each year, or something like that?
Absolutely, yes.
And then, if we did that, could we go back and say another year, okay, yeah, we didn't like the way that worked, we don't want to do that this year?
Right. As long as, as you are taking action that's consistent with that commitment that was for future special projects, then yes. And so, I think you have a lot of latitude there, changes you might make down the road.
Well, one, one of the things that I, one of the ideas that I, that I just kinda crossed my mind was I was looking at the fact that the city has the, the tomorrow fund.
Tomorrow fund, yes.
And, and they've basically have committed the, I don't, I don't, I'm not gonna say what their structure is, because I don't know exactly what their structure is, but I know that they use some of those, that money to fund special projects, or almost like grants that people apply for.
Yes.
And what caught my eye was that they were funding grants for AISD. There were some, and, and that was great, but my thought is, why don't we do that? We have some teachers that have great ideas, principals that have initiatives that maybe with just a little bit of funding, can almost become kind of a, a little testing ground for us that somebody says, hey, I'd like to give it a shot to do something like this. If I had, you know, $1,000, $2,000, you know, we could test it out, and we may find some interesting initiatives that we could bring or expand as a district. And so, it was one of the ideas that I had, and, and not appropriating the entire amount, but at least initially, some of the interest, or all of the interest on an annual basis, say, okay, well, you know, it doesn't look like a lot of money, but $700,000 could fund a lot of these little ideas that teachers, and, and just initiatives. I was visiting with one of the principals, Mr., Mr. Brown from Remensy Elementary, and he was telling me about this one teacher that had gone out and created little CD-ROMs for their students to take home for the summer so that they would have some curriculum to follow. And she had used her own money, had asked, like, friends and neighbors to donate money to her and, to do this, and he's like, the stuff that she created was amazing. And I'm like, we should, those, that's exactly the kind of stuff we should be funding. If somebody wants to take the initiative to make the extra effort on their own, to say, hey, I, I'm passionate about what I, enough about what I'm doing that I want to do this, we should be able to fund those things. And again, maybe we can come up with some interesting programs off of that, that we can expand district-wise. Just, just a thought.
One thing that I'd just jump in there. Arlington has a great resource just for that, and it's called the Education Foundation. That's exactly what they fund through their grants, and they've done that for over a million dollars. When I would, the reason I'm throwing that out here is that's one of the least tapped resources that we, as a district, are using. Teachers have these, say, that teacher from Remensy would have applied for that grant, that would have been a great use for it. So, we actually do already have the Education Foundation that are grant, and making these grants available. So, just as a reminder and a plug here.
And I know, I'm familiar with the, not, I don't completely understand the, the structure of it. Who governs that foundation? Does this board govern that foundation, or is that a completely separate foundation?
Dr. Cavassos and myself both sit on that Board of Directors, and the, the foundation itself is committed just to Arlington in giving grants back to schools for teachers that apply with worthwhile causes. And, and they've given over a million dollars to this district.
Also, are you saying that instead of creating something else, we would donate $700,000 to that foundation, then they could accept and, and deliver the grants?
No, I'm not suggesting that we donate $700,000 to them. I, I'm suggesting that we, we have a source that's out there. Maybe there's, there's some other things that we can work at to help support. It, it may be that there's something there, you know, whatever the will of the board is.
Yeah. So, I guess, I like the concept, and so, what I'm, what I wanna, what I'm saying is, instead of letting this money just sit there in the bank doing nothing, to actually put it to work using that same structure. I don't know if we could do it through them, or we have to do it separately, how that works.
We, just in answer to, to Mr. Hibbs' question, or if there may be, it was your question about whether this board governs them. No, they are a separate entity, and we don't have, although they exist for us, we don't have any true authority over them. They're a separate nonprofit entity, and so, so no, we, we cannot give money to them to, to invest or to do with whatever. So, anyway, I just wanted to clarify that.
So, if we wanted to do what I, what I'm proposing, then we would have to come up with our own structure to do it ourselves, and, and the whole thing?
Right.
Right, okay.
Okay.
So, anyway, that, that's just my idea.
Hang on, Ms. Castillo.
Some of the, thank you.
I don't know that we could even give the money to a teacher. We'd have to give it to the school?
Oh, absolutely.
Does that sound more appropriate?
Absolutely. It would have to be a, a grant to a school.
Yeah.
Or, it, it could be an individual teacher that applies for it, but the grant would remain district funds, and we would actually write the checks and control the expenditure of those funds for a specific purpose, much like we do now with the Education Foundation funds. We hold those and.
Thank you. I thought we were trying to get into a gray area there, but that's a great idea.
Okay. Well, that's, I mean, that's just a general concept. I don't, haven't, haven't figured out all the legal aspects of it. That's just, I wanted to figure out something to do with these, with the resources that we have, again, to maybe encourage teachers that want to go a little bit above and beyond, or have ideas, initiatives that they want to bring forward, and tell them, yes, we'll, we'll go ahead and help you with those.
Mr. Hogg.
Thank you. Thank you, President Baron. Mr. Pomp, your, your ideas are going right. We've got to, I think with this money, it's an endowed fund. And the money's not just sitting there not doing anything, it's earning interest. So, the money's working for us and growing. I think if you put it into an endowed fund, that's where you're spending a certain amount. Usually, an endowed fund's automatically kicking back in 10% to help it continually grow and help perpetually fund itself. And I think the whole key is you've got to find, how does it perpetually fund? I, I, I won't be voting to approve anything that's going to utilize this money, and it doesn't have perpetually fund payments. Because we could use all this money like that, and it's gone. And, and there's not more gas money coming out of the same area they've taken from us. So, I think it does have to be perpetually funded, is the entire key to this whole program. Ms. Powell, I do want to ask a question that asks, every time I think the natural gas fund comes up. So, we have 22 million in here. Of all the gas money we've collected, has the district already spent some of that gas money?
We have. When we very first began leasing our mineral interest. There was four and a half million dollars of lease bonus money that was placed into the general operating fund before this fund was created, and, and that was, that was spent.
So, I already know 4.5 million, and I knew that answer automatically. And that's just to reiterate that we've already spent almost 25% of that money. And while it was nice during that time, it's not perpetually funded. So, we are 4.5 million already spent from that money. So, if anyone says we haven't spent any of the natural gas fund, we have spent some of our natural gas money. We do have, Mr. Pomp, on the tomorrow fund, the thing they've kind of found out, because they did set up a separate entity to manage that money. They found out in the first year, and they've kind of revamped it this last year. They were allocating too many, the dollars to too many small projects, and they didn't feel like it was really moving the needle. So, they've kind of made a switch and a change in this last year to being able to go in, because I think their max they were able to give was maybe 20,000 or 25, and I'm just taking that off the top of my head. And now, they've come in and said, we need to be able to give larger portions to really move the needle. So, I, I think your idea is great on being able to fund certain projects, or even projects that the district wants to try and do, and say, okay, we're gonna use this money for seed money for the first two years to fund this program and see how it works, you know, at $100,000 a year, and then move forward in a new project, or something like that, until we can gain the funding, then hopefully receive the grant funding. I think the other idea of how to use this is you can, and it's not a gift of public funds, Ms. Castillo, but you can provide some of these things to provide supplies for those teachers for what they're already shelling out of their own pocket, day in and day out. The supplies would be in the classroom, they would be purchased by the district and for the buildings. Does that help, Ms. Castillo? There's many other districts. Fort Worth gives every single one of their teachers money for that every year. Our teachers are spending a lot of money.
I hear that.
Every single year in the classroom. And, and I'm not saying you want to allocate all that, but there are some creative ways to go about that to provide some relief in that area. But I also, I think the whole point of this is we've got to treat this like an endowed fund, and it's got to perpetually fund itself.
I'm totally.
How do we keep that money moving and working for its, working for us on many things we do? Whatever is a board, we decide to do.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Mr. Hibbs?
He's done.
Mrs. Peña.
I was just gonna say that I, I thought that Tony's idea was great, but then immediately went to the public, give the funds thought, and said, okay, but I knew there was a barrier there. Now, I've been a longtime advocate of utilizing these funds for things that were special projects and, but not recurring expenses, because we could deplete it quickly. I think that we need to get creative and, and move forward with those things that'll benefit. What I see we can be using it for is at any point in time, we think that we can't implement the strategic plan as quickly and as boldly as we need to, then we tap into those funds and utilize them to make sure that we're successful in getting the strategic pa, plan in place. Things such as what we talked about today, this management audit. Had we, if we can't afford to pay for it out of our general operating funds, we should tap that, because it's important and vital for us to be successful in the strategic plan. So, my thought process is that we found where we need to be investing, and that's to make sure that the strategic plan becomes reality. So, that would be the direction, excuse me, Benz, that would be the direction that I would want to see us take that funding.
And I guess that was my question. That was my question earlier, whether we could reallocate. So, if we said we did set up an endowed fund, but then recognize that, okay, we're gonna need a few million dollars for our strategic plan, could we pull that out and say, okay, we're gonna take that out and allocate it, reallocate it to something else that we?
We can, and we use the term endowment. Under the accounting rules, we can't actually call the, it's not, we can't account for it as an endowment. We can account for it as a special revenue fund and, and still achieve exactly what you're talking about, but it would still be treated like a special revenue fund.
Correct. That's fine. But, okay, so we could, at any time, say, okay, well, we need $3 million off of this, and pull it off, or whatever.
As long as it's a special project, absolutely.
I think what Mr. Hogg was getting at is that we draw a line somewhere, say, 20 million, and we, we never go below that in that fund.
Yeah.
Something like that?
Yeah, and you also, when you look at how endowments are really working, they have really set rules and principles of how much of their principal they're going to reinvest each year so that it perpetually keeps up with inflation, is some of the things. So, there, there's a lot of, I, I would say, look at our partners at UTA. They're really good. Universities are really good at managing endowments. Most universities, to be able to have an endowment, it's a minimum of $20,000. That's what it takes to endow something. Talking scholarships, things like that. And so, you can use those things, and it's, what it does is it helps them perpetually grow while using that interest money to fund projects that you, you've talked about.
Well, President Baron, what, what I would propose to do then is, as Chair of the Committee, take that, work with the administration, maybe listen to Mr. Hogg's recommendation, visit with some UTA people, and bring back to the board an actual proposal on how to, how to structure that.
Okay. Let me think on that for a minute. Dr. Reich?
I, I agree with everything that's been said, absolutely. I, I think there's other things that we can also include in there as special projects regarding potential scholarships for kids. And could be going to college, could be awards for need-based to travel for college visits, as an example, for those that can't afford to do a long-distance travel for a college visit. Still a gift, well, there's, obviously, we can work around the, the technicalities of it. Yes. We can work well within the law. And some other, other items that are in line with our strategic plan of, not necessarily immediately, but doing a, some type of an incentive program. And this, this would be a legal question if we could, but an incentive program for our youth. If there's a, let me think here, something where they try to develop a new product, as an example. And maybe we can put some seed money towards that. money towards that process, those kind of things. Something that is in line with what we're trying to do to create leadership, innovation, that type of thing. So, that's a different direction, but something that I think is worthy for the committee to look at as another idea of a, something with innovation out of the box.
Mr. Hogg.
Thank you, President Barron. Plain and simple, we've got to have pretty hard and fast rules around this, and put a very strong structure to it. Ms. Powell, one question I have. When this money's just sitting in a special fund, if it is allocated towards a certain use, let's say, if we put hard and fast rules around it, is that still considered just part of our general fund balance?
What?
Or if the money's allocated, would it then not be counted towards our general fund balance?
The dollars that you appropriate for expenditure, say, you're going to adopt a budget for a one-year period, and so, if those dollars are appropriated for expenditure, then they would not be considered available fund balance that could be used for general operating purposes.
So, if we allocated $500,000 a year.
Right.
Towards expenditures each year.
The remaining balance still sits.
Those wouldn't count, but the rest of the millions would be counted.
Yes.
Towards our general fund balance.
It's not counted towards your general fund balance, but credit rating agencies look at those dollars as being available for general operating purposes, should you need them. So, when they look at us and our entire financial position to give us a credit rating, they will consider those dollars being available, but technically, it's not general fund.
So, we have the credit ratings, but what about when the legislature looks at our money and our allocation?
Well, this is in a special revenue fund, and so, the board has committed that for a specific purpose, and so.
So, when they look and they say our fund balance.
That's right.
This would not be counted as part of our fund balance.
And, and looking back several years ago, when the state still had us computing or presenting a schedule within the audit report that was called optimum fund balance, they very specifically would not allow you to use anything within that optimum computation that wasn't already in the general fund. So, they would not consider the gas funds as being available.
That's what I needed here. Thank you.
Mrs. Peña.
I just wanted to say that I like the idea of the committee going and coming back with some information to the board, but just to be cognizant of the fact that there are a lot of things going out in the community that we don't want to overlap. One of them is, we already pay the Chamber of Commerce to do a lot of things on our behalf, and, for instance, the gala benefit that's going to happen in, for New Year's Eve this year, the first annual, that's in conjunction with Partners in Education. That's in conjunction with our contract with them. Those funds will be involving the community. The community is investing in our students. This is going to be scholarship money. Rotary is doing this in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce. So, we've already got an avenue where the Chamber has opened a door to help Rotary provide scholarships to our students, and this is money that's being generated just for the students. So, we don't want to duplicate that effort. You know, those are the types of things that we need to look at, so that we wisely use this money to help in some other venue, because we already, part of the strategic plan, again, is to get community involvement. This is community involvement, and we don't want to negate one area of that in order to do something else. So, I would just ask that the committee make sure that they look at all those aspects of things that are already being done in our community that relate to our strategic plan, when they bring it back and present those types of things. And I happen to know about these items, because I'm in the Partners in Education Committee with the Rotary and also part of this gala. Just as Mr. Hibbs talked about, the Education Foundation, you're aware of a venue as well. So, we just need to be cognizant of that and not duplicate or overlap those items.
I have steadfastly been against spending any of the money in the gas fund, and I think I still am. Had we listened to certain folks in the community, that money would long be gone already. So, let's not be in a rush to find ways to spend it, as opposed to finding a way to preserve its, the bulk of that money. Perpetually keep some, all right? I consider that truly emergency money, and we ought not to be thinking about spending it lightly.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Appreciate it. That is the last item on our agenda. The board will now move into closed session, because we're not done yet. We're going to do this right. Not yet. All right. Mr. Secretary, you got anything on your list?
No, sir.
Really? How about your shadow?
I think we're good.
Oh, she's going to back you up. Thank you. Okay, we're, the board trustees on October 18th, beginning at 10:00, 11:30 PM, will convene into closed session pursuant to sections 551.071, 551.072, and 551.074 of the Texas Government Code, in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, for the purposes as outlined in the agenda. We will not be coming back into open session. Good night, y'all.